Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on Zoom. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting, May 7th, 2025, 7:30 PM via Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on the Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and was sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the pleasure of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held June 4th, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom.
No, no, it's at 6:30 PM in person. Remember, we dedicated it to-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. 6:30 PM in person. Yeah, you're right. Absolutely right. Sorry. At Town Hall. Zoom will only be available to watch. There'll be no comment on Zoom on that night. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waino?
Present.
Chairman Bagel?
Here. Thank you. PB 24-19, the Waymaker LLC, 40 Eagle Ridge Way, the draft resolution for adoption. I make a motion that we adopt this with conditions as stated. Ms. McGovern, would you go over the conditions?
Okay.
A number of issues that we have to address.
But I printed it out. Here we go. The applicant shall comply with all applicable township, county, state, and federal laws, ordinances, regulations, and directives, including without limitation, obtaining all applicable local, state, and federal approvals or permits, without limitation of the foregoing prior to the signing of the approved site plans and prior to the commencement of any land disturbance or construction. But excluding interior renovations, this applicant shall submit to this board with a copy to the board engineer, proof that it has obtained all required governmental land use approvals for the stormwater management system and driveway landscaping, removal of the concrete pipe, replacing it with riprap at a minimum of two deck dams, enlargement of the scour hole, and construction of the two-tiered boulder wall. If any, if another governmental entity or agency grants a waiver or variance inconsistent with the terms of this resolution of approval or materially affects the plans and/or exhibits submitted by the applicant, which has the impact of vacating this approval of the stormwater management system or the conditions attached, then the applicant shall reapply to this board, respecting the same, and this board shall have the right to view that issue as it relates to this approval and these conditions and modify and amend same if appropriate. This condition shall not apply to the terms of the private settlement agreement between the applicant and objector.
Thank you. So I'd like to specifically thank Mr. Scott and Ms. Carballo for the extensive help that they did evaluating this project and bringing it to fruition. There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, second to motion. On the motion, Yamalat.
One second, okay. Mr. Waino. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt the Western Planning Board Draft Minutes of January 22nd, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, seconds. Does anybody have any deletions, additions, or corrections of the minutes? Seeing none. Vote on the motion, please. Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, the minutes are adopted. Thank you. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the Township Prefectment, please?
Okay, we have Mr. Hazel from Schwang Group as our planner. We have Mr. Philip Scott from Matrix as our consulting engineer. If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an ordinance review sent down by the council for our deliberation. 2819-25, Stormwater 4825 Revised Final. And we have, Ms. Carballo has sent a memorandum, and Mr. Hazel will discuss is this consistent with the master plan? Mr. Hazel?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the proposed ordinance, and I do find that it is in consistency with the master plan.
Thank you, sir. Okay, does anybody have any questions about the modified ordinance, the updated ordinance? Seeing none, I make a motion that we adopt, that we recommend to the town council to adopt 2918-25, Stormwater 4825 Revised in the final version form. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Counselperson Scarpah, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, this is adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you send up to the town council that we have evaluated the stormwater management ordinance revision, and it is consistent with it? We have found that it is consistent with the master plan.
Will do so.
Thank you. Application PB 24-14, 172174 Main Street LLC, Block 83, Lot 1 and 5.01, Zone B1, 172174 Main Street in West Orange, for the applicant, Mr. Zerbal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tyler Zabrow. I'm a partner with Spyro Harrison and Nelson. I'm here on behalf of 172174 Main Street LLC. It's been a little over a month since we were last here with our first hearing happening on February 5th. So I thought it might make sense for me to give a little bit of background and see where we're at at this point. So on the, at the first meeting, we heard from Mr. Cox. He was the representative and owner of 172174 Main Street LLC. He had provided some testimony of his, about his plan for the property, which is to add a third story and convert the building to a mixed use with two office spaces on the first floor and seven residential units divided between the second and third floors, one of which will be income restricted. And then he offered some testimony regarding the renovations inside and out of the building. And then we heard from our architect, Jason Peist, and he kind of went into the specifics of the project, that all of the mechanical features are going to be upgraded to, you know, modern, modern mechanical appliances, air conditioners, all of which are going to be quieter. The building's going to be completely renovated outside. So you're not going to have this dated 1979-ish building. It's going to be completely renovated to look, you know, much more modern and consistent with what the downtown area is supposed to look like under the master plan. Mr. Peist also offered some testimony regarding the building height, which is 34.5 feet, where 35 is permitted in the zone. And he explained that, you know, the only reason we are here before the board is because we're requesting a variance for the third story and existing non-conforming bulk variances. He also, sorry. And he did show us some elevations of what the building's expected to look like. And then we heard from Donna Bullock, our professional engineer. She explained about the sightlines, that there's clear view in each direction. And she also explained that this is an existing approved parking lot. The entrances are existing. They're approved. So nothing's going to be changing there. And then we had a number of concerns raised by the public regarding the increased traffic. So we retained Patrick Downey, our traffic engineer, and he presented some calculations, which, you know, in summary, you know, this proposed mixed use is going to generate less trips than the existing two-story commercial office use. And then at the last meeting, we had finished up with our professional planner, John McDonough. He showed a number of photographs of the building taken by drone, the front of the building, the surrounding area. And he explained that, you know, the surrounding areas consist of two-and-a-half-story, large, large two-and-a-half-story structures, many of which are raised above the ground level. And we've got three-story buildings directly across the street. And he also offered testimony that the project fully complies with the use requirements of the zone and substantially complies with the bulk requirements such as height, parking, et cetera. And then Mr. McDonough offered some testimony regarding the relief for the rear yard setback and coverage, both of which are pre-existing conditions that constitute a hardship under the flexible C variance and the ORELO case. And then Mr. McDonough offered some testimony regarding the purposes of zoning and under the MLUL, which are advanced by this application. If I remember correctly, it was Purpose A, that promotes the general welfare. And by advancing, the general welfare is advanced by renovating, repurposing, revitalizing a longstanding familiar building. It'll add new housing for people to live in and new businesses for people to shop at, work at, et cetera. Then it would promote Purpose G, which is a promotion of various, a variety of uses in appropriate locations, because the site is a civic center. He testified that it's good planning to concentrate people in the downtown setting with easy access to civic and public amenities. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, because the project delivers a fresh, new renovated building as opposed to a dated, dilapidated building. And it complements the area, and it really does go with the building that's directly across the street, that three-story building. And he also discussed Purpose M, the promotion of efficient use of land. That's exactly what this project is doing. We're adapting an existing use. We're reusing the property, renovating and altering it, which is really the central purpose of planning. And then Mr. McDonough also testified as to, you know, alternate uses that are permitted in this zone that would be less desirable, such as, you know, a bar or something of that sort, which we find would be more disruptive to the area. So the applicant is really proposing something that's, you know, much less intensive. And then in connection with the detriments, Mr. McDonough offered testimony that he didn't believe there were any, because the relief that's being sought is not causing any detriments. We're upgrading the building. It's improving the relationships on Main Street and the homes that surround it. The added store is not require a height variance. It's in line with the buildings that are surrounding it. And it's visually and functionally, visually and functionally, you know, the departure from what is contemplated and permitted in this zone is not substantial. The site is, in his testimony was that the site is sunken down in relation to the adjoining residential uses. And everything kind of slopes down in that area. And there are quite a few existing trees that go up into the area where this third store would be, which is going to provide that additional natural buffer. And, you know, in some, the flexible C variance relief is appropriate because the benefits of this proposed project as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. That being said, we did have some concerns from adjoining property owners and from the board questioning, you know, property, the privacy on the adjoining properties and aesthetics. So we do have our experts here tonight to answer any questions. You may have specifically Mr. McDonough or Mr. Peist in connection with the aesthetic concerns. And in terms of privacy, I spoke to my client. We're willing to agree to a condition of approval on that third story, where we would put in the privacy film on the windows that'll, you know, further mitigate these concerns that have been raised by neighbors. That being said, I think we were just about done or done with all of our direct testimony. And we'll open it up if the board has any additional questions for Mr. McDonough. And I think he's... John, are you on now?
Yep, I'm here. I can only see myself, so I can't see anybody.
Just fine. So I have Mr. McDonough here. If anybody has any, from the board has additional questions from Mr. McDonough, I kind of want to try to keep them focused on things that haven't already been addressed, just so that, whether that be from the public, really. But if the board has any questions, we're happy to answer those.
I have one clarification that I need, Dr. Bagel.
Ms. McGovern?
There are seven apartment units altogether, and I know they're of various sizes. One of them has to be, is being designated as affordable housing. We need to know the unit number and the number of bedrooms of the unit that is being designated for the affordable housing.
Okay, I will have to discuss with Mr. Cox. I don't know that we know at this time, but we can certainly address that as a condition of approval.
Yeah, because you're going to have to deed restrict it, so it's going to have to be determined. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Mr. McDonough, you realize that you're still under oath, sir?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions from Mr. McDonough? We go around the board. Vice Chairman Guerino, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough on his previous testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough on his previous testimony?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Castleperson Scarpah, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough on his previous testimony?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
I just want to ask a question. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to Mr. McDonough, but talking about some kind of a film on the windows in the back, is it possible, even though it's not the applicant's property, is it possible to put some landscaping on the neighbor's property to do some natural screening? Maybe a couple of evergreens that maybe either line up or offset or however, with the windows to try to help soften up the back of the building? Is that an appropriate thing to ask?
I mean, that's, I guess I can answer that question. I mean, I think we have some difficulty in terms of, you know, one, we're not legally permitted to do anything on somebody else's property, and we have such a small amount of space behind that building. I believe Mr. McDonough, he's a landscape architect himself, and he testified that there's no room to really put anything there. While we're happy to work with the neighboring property owners, it's not really something that we can, we can do.
Okay, so if the neighbor, if the neighbor had agreed to that, that'd be something that the applicant would discuss with the neighbor and come to some solution, resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Separating apart from the, from the Planning Board.
Great, thank you.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's prior, previous testimony?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Scott, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's previous testimony?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. McDonough on his previous testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Sir, Dr. Bagwell, I do know that the objector, I can see they have an expert, Mr. Steck. I don't know whether you want to call him up before you, because there's-
Does he have any questions from Mr. McDonough? Or does he want to present?
Oh, I thought that's what you were going towards. I'm sorry. I didn't-
That's okay. We could have, so if Mr. McDonough wants to hang around, we could have Mr. Steck testify, and then we could work backwards. I'd be fine with that. Mr. Zerbal, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I think that we'd gotten through most, if not all, of the public questions last time. And we heard from Mr. Buckley, Jamie C., Lenny Carr, Jamie C. twice, and then Shelby, Donna, Viewer, Stan Shapiro, and Austin Shelby again.
Okay. Well, you just brought back Mr. McDonough, so I just wanted to be sure. Okay.
Of course. No, I just wanted him to be available if the board had any remaining questions.
I got it. Thank you. Okay. Would you advance Mr. Steck to the board, please?
Right now.
And then Ms. McGovern can swear him in?
I do, just while we're bringing him in. I do see there's a member of the public, Jerry Sweeney, who has his hand up. So I don't know whether that's a question or has something to do with Mr. Steck.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, would you, you can, would you bring Mr. Sweeney on? We'll find out what he wants to say.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney, did you have a question? You have to unmute yourself.
Hold on. Yes, I have questions. Absolutely.
Questions for Mr. McDonough?
Questions for Mr. McDonough.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McDonough, I wanted to go over some of the alleged benefits that the, that this improvement would have. First, I want to address the improvements to the tenants, the residential tenants. You made a point that, that the location is in a walkable area, but you never said the building was walkable. And to get to the building, you have to go back 126 feet, and it's a very extreme elevation. So I did want to ask you, what's the, what's the difference in the elevation between the sidewalk, elevation of land, and the first floor?
I don't know.
Don't know? Okay. 20 feet? 25 feet?
Between the sidewalk in front of the site and the actual front door?
Yes.
To the building?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to find.
I don't think it's that extreme. I, I, yeah, I don't think it's that extreme.
Well, I, I do know that the-
Sir, ask question, whatever you know is great, but you can't testify, sir.
Yeah, no, I know, but I have to use the records. Matrix indicated that it was greater than 10% grade. At 10% grade, that elevation would be, to the base of the wall would be about 21, about 22 feet higher. So to walk up there, you'd have 22 feet, you'd have to 126 feet to the back. And I'm just asking if you can verify that. 126 feet to the back. You'd have to then go up about 22 feet. Plus, you'd go up the four feet, about 26 feet to get to the, to the second floor. It's going to be another 10 feet, so that's about 36 feet. And the fourth floor would be about 46 foot. So essentially, someone walk, would you say that the walk from the sidewalk to the third floor, you would essentially have to go 126 feet laterally and what amounts to a stair of four stories high? You'd have to walk that. So I want to ask you, is that, in your view, walkable?
Yes, the site is walkable. I've walked it myself. You can walk the site, yes.
You walk from the base all the way to the second floor?
I walked, I did not go inside, no.
Okay, so you only walked the lower. So you would, you'd have to walk essentially two more floors to get up there. Okay, I just want to make sure that we had, you don't know what the slope is, and you don't know the, do you know what the slope is, by the way, of the parking lot? Sloping in the angular, the angles?
I don't.
Okay, okay, well-
I can give you the number. It's not the slope, but it's 18 feet elevation change.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Sorry, that's, I'm the attorney for the applicant. It's 18 feet.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Are you sworn under oath?
I'm not. I'm the attorney, but I'm-
Okay, that's fine. I really wanted to know if the planner did. Let me go to the next one. He said, he said that the building would only be increased by 34.5 feet. Is that measured from the mean height of the building?
It's measured in accordance with the ordinance. I, I don't know.
That is the mean height. Okay. So what's the difference between the mean height and the base of that wall? It looks to me by about six feet.
I, I don't know. I didn't conduct the measurement.
Okay, so you would say that essentially from the front, the building would look like it's 40 feet high or equivalent of 40 sto-, of four stories. Is that accurate?
No, it's, under the letter of the ordinance, it's a three-story building.
I'm asking you from, if you look at it from the front, because appearance in the downtown Main Street area, appearance counts. Aesthetics count. It's an important factor. So I'm asking you, would it look like it's 40 feet high at the front?
In my opinion, no.
Okay, so let me get to the third one. And Dr. Bagwell, I'm going to ask you, we extend my time. I have a few more questions.
One more question. Sir, Mr. Sweeney, one more question, and you're done. But go right ahead.
One more question. I want to get the visual appearance in the area. So I want to know if, if Mr. McDonnell walked from Lakeside Avenue to Charles Street along Main Street?
I, I walked several blocks, I'll say, several streets in front of the site. I don't have the street names in front of me, but I didn't only walk the site. I walked, I walked several cross streets.
Okay, and did you notice that this lot is completely different from every other lot? It's got a very long, very huge parking lot in front of the building, very unattractive and very steep slope? Did you notice that?
I'll answer the first question in the affirmative. I did notice that the site is distinctly different than other properties along the corridor, which is the exact reason why it's appropriate for a variance condition, because variances are supposed to relate to distinct pieces of property.
Okay, and did you notice that the, the mass of the building was disproportionate to the adjacent buildings or any other building on that side of the street?
No.
Okay, and, and I just, for, for the sake of, just to make sure we're all clear on this. When you grant a variance on this, is effectively going to put in place this building and its layout with the large parking lot and really large property at the back? It'll be, in your view, will effectively permanently fix this in a way inconsistent with all the other nice new buildings that were established on Main Street, across the street, in which you commented on?
No.
So you don't view that the approval of this thing will result in permanent, essentially, fixing that unattractive lot in the way that it appears now in a way that's inconsistent with all the other downtown properties in the area on that side of the street or even across the street?
No.
Okay, thank you. I can't, I appreciate the extra time. I do have more questions, but I know urgency is important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Okay, Mr. Steck?
Mr. Steck, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Are you? There's no attorney that called you as a witness, right?
That's correct.
All right, so I guess you're going to have to self-authenticate yourself as an expert. Dr. Bagwell, are you going to do the?
Ms. McGovern, what I would say is that Mr. Steck is well-known to the Planning Board, has testified here many, many times. And the only question I'll ask is, your license still active in the state of New Jersey? In good standing in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
Unless anybody has a question of Mr. Steck to Wadiar, I'd recommend we accept Mr. Steck as a, you're here as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, then seeing no comment, go right ahead, sir. We accept you as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Okay. By way of preparation, I did listen to the last hearing on, on the second. And I did review the application materials. I toured the property and the surrounding area, took some photos and reviewed the master plan and the zoning ordinance. What I think I'd like to do is put up a, an exhibit, reference it, and then I'll go more to my sum and substance of my testimony. So I'm going to try to share here.
Okay, and this wasn't given to the secretary to put on the-
This was revised from an earlier version, so this is new, and I will send it. I will.
Will you describe it, and Ms. McGovern will label it?
I will. Let's see if I put this on here.
Are you sharing your screen, or is this my computer doing this?
I'm trying to do it. I'm trying to do it now, and for some reason, it's not. Let's see here. I'm going to try it again here. Let's see here. I'm going to try it again here. Stop, share. Let me close some other stuff. Okay, we'll try this again. I'm having some trouble here. Let me try this.
Is it West Orange on the upper right? Does it say West Orange Exhibit 6?
Yeah, that's my screen, and I'm trying to get my, let me, let me, let me try this one more time. I think I can get it now. You're looking at all my jobs, I guess. Is that visible?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How many pages is this?
This is a total of six pages.
Okay, so we'll mark this whole package 01, or objector 1, because we don't have, or do we have other photographs?
These will be 04.
04. Okay, so this will be 04. And then I think when I see P1, that stands for page 1?
That's correct, and or Peter 1, either, either one.
All right. So when you refer, when you refer to 04, if you could then refer to each page as you speak to it, okay?
So let me identify the exhibit, and I'll refer to it a little more later. This is dated May 6 of 2025, and it was prepared by me. Upper left-hand corner is a portion of the zoning map, and as you can see, the B1 zone is, goes along Main Street. It is primarily residential. Most of the uses are residential. Older houses, housing units, most of them are up close to the street. They have kind of classic residential looks with sloping roofs. Very few have onsite parking, so they use Main Street for a parking resource. This shows the subject property from a Google aerial view. I've outlined it in yellow. The placement of the building is highly unusual for the B1 zone. It's the only building in the area in that zone that's a box. It's the only pure office building there. It's the only building that has the parking field in front. It's the only building that is set that far back from the front property line. So it's, it's an unusual look, an unusual shape, and an unusual placement. The second, P2 of 04, on the left-hand side, I superimposed the zoning lines on a 2020 infrared satellite photo. Subject property is in yellow. To the rear is, as the board is aware, the Wellen Park. That's an R1 zone. Across Main Street and three properties, the fourth property to the northeast are parts of the redevelopment area, zone. On the left-hand side, you see I put the names of certain property owners. My clients are Jonathan Amanda Barton, and they're share part of the backyard. To the north of there is Sophia Lubin and Eric Buckley. And also sharing the rear yard is the Donna Uer property. To the right shows from the NJDEP website, the historic nature of the area. Llewellyn Park, as you know, is on the National Register and the State Register. To the north is the Edison National Historic Site. And across the way where the new conversion has occurred is a, at least a proposed on the national level, a historic district. The subject property is not referenced as historic. The blue color, according to NJDEP, says it's eligible to be designated as historic. And as you can see, the abutting properties were looked at as worker housing. I'm going to the third page now, P3. This is a drone photo of the subject property. It shows the character of the building, basically a box with vertical lines and a faux mansard roof. Apparently, it's leased for the parking of trucks at the moment. The blue house in the upper right-hand corner is the Barton House. P4 are photographs that I took on March 7 of this year. The upper photograph is from the second story of the Barton residence. So that second story, when you look out the window, is about, as you can see, even with the current roof of the property now. And you can see the buildings across the street and the tree line in the distance. That accessory shed on the right is also on the Barton property, as is the wood frame garage left of center. Lower left is a picture of the rear of the subject property. There is a, only a narrow area, as the board is aware, and then there is a retaining wall. And so the residential yards are higher than the grade in the building. On the right-hand side is a picture that I took on March 7 of this year. But I superimposed from another photograph that was taken by one of the Bartons to show the existing shadow pattern at 9 o'clock in the morning on February 10. What I simply did is superimpose in a red line where the shadow falls, again, 9 o'clock in the morning. And this obviously is without the third story going on. So there is, because the shadow pattern typically goes to the north, there is obviously an impact, and it will be a more severe impact when another story is added. As you can see, in terms of the backyard of the Bartons, there are no, there's one small evergreen that's in the left of center, but there's essentially no screening in the wintertime, and the trees are fairly old. So there is, in my opinion, no effective screening at the moment that blocks the subject building from the Barton property. P5, there's been a lot of discussion about this sightline. And on the upper side, I parked my car as if I was parked, I stopped my car as if I was driving out of the driveway. And since I have an SUV, my eye height is probably 4 feet 5 inches off the ground rather than the 3.5 feet. But because there are so few parking spaces onsite for the residential uses, I frankly have never been by there where there aren't, where the curb line is free of cars. Below that is a sightline exhibit that the applicant's engineer has presented. And, you know, the sightline that's required to be shown is, I've highlighted in red. That rectangle to the left is where a car would be positioned. But the applicant's engineer said, well, you know, those cars are movable, so there aren't always going to be there. Well, even on the applicant's diagram, you have to look through six cars in order to get the sight distance that is recommended to see a car coming. And I'm sure as the board members, so it's, it's a busy street, and the sightline is difficult, because there are always cars, in my judgment, parked along the curb line. That's both looking to the left and to the right as you're leaving the site. And as you know, during rush hour in the evening, typically, there's a backup of cars. So if you're going to leave this property and turn left, oftentimes, there are times where you have to wait for a courtesy gap. So it, it's not that there can't be any development on the property, but more intensive development has to, in my opinion, meet the negative criteria. And part of that is the level of traffic activity and the difficulty of seeing cars that are in the through lane. Six, I'm going to spend some time on, but let, let me leave it there for the moment. And I'm going to go through the sum and substance of my testimony, and then I'll spend some time on this slide. This property, as you know, is already non-conforming, because it has excessive pavement. It has a significant violation of the rear setback, as well as the rear buffer. And it has parking that is, at least by county standards, too close to the front right-of-way. The county site plan resolution says you shouldn't have cars backing up within 20 feet of the right-of-way of Main Street. So there are significant non-conformities at the moment. And another way to say that is the applicant has more building than they're entitled to. So when Mr. McDonough says there's a hardship, the answer is, this building couldn't be built today, and I'm not sure you would get the same amount of square footage if you conformed to the impervious coverage. That would shrink some of the parking. There's not a hardship due to existing conditions, because the applicant has more building than they're entitled to today, in my judgment, looking at the limits on impervious coverage and the like. As you know, the applicant wants to put on a third story, having the same footprint as the rest of the building, which is 3,303 square feet. The applicant wants to convert the first floor left for medical office use, which produces about 9.57 parking spaces. I note parenthetically that both the traffic report and the architect's plans used a generic multiplier for medical off, for the office space, but it's higher. And that's statistically true for the medical office space. That's one space per 150 square feet. So there was a lot of debate last time about how much parking is really required. And it's clear that the applicant has to rely on some kind of shared parking, even though the applicant says, oh, I'll have, you know, limit residential tenants to one parking space. The answer is, there still has to be a place for guests to park. And of course, the difficult day is Saturday. That's when the medical offices are going to be open. That's when there's going to be some office on the right side of the building on the first floor. And that's the day when a lot of people don't work. So it's not clear, in my opinion, that the applicant has met its burden in terms of the supply of parking. Part of my analysis was to look at the surrounding area, and I'm going to move back for a little bit here and go to that first thing. This is a fully developed area. This building is unique, and it's the reverse of what is normally required. If you consider this part of the downtown, and that's what Mr. McDonough kept on testifying, you know, your master plan wants mixed uses. Well, the answer is, if you look at the design standards, you're supposed to have a building that's up toward the street to have pedestrian traffic. In this case, if that was the case, there'd be parking in the rear. And in my opinion, that's the appropriate scenario, because that parking would be depressed in elevation, and it could be buffered. But the building can't be buffered. And I note that, again, there are historic characteristics of the area that ought to be taken into account. Now, as you know, that in 2019, the reexamination report recommended that the zone be changed from OB1 to B1, and the rationale was consistent with existing land uses and desired future use. Well, to be consistent with land uses, it would be a dwelling or a multiple dwelling up toward the front. That's would be consistency. I'm not sure what desired future use means, because that's not described. But if you look at your design standards, and, and again, if you consider this part of the downtown, I took a look at the Downtown Alliance Designs Guidelines that are in the ordinance, and it says that roof shapes should be like the surrounding structures. The, the new building, any new building, in this case, it's the new is the third floor, would have the same relative placement as other structures in the area. It says that you will, new construction ought to respect the established rhythms of the streetscape. And you should have, you know, used materials that are common in the area. So for someone to say that this is consistent with the area, in my opinion, is not correct. It's, it simply isn't. I want to, I'll want to go to the end slide again. P6 of 04. I want to read two definitions in your ordinance. One is what a mixed-use development is. And it says, a building or buildings that include one or more dwelling units above one or more non-residential uses on the ground floor. So Mr. McDonough says the master plan encourages mixed use, and the zoning ordinance has it as a conditional use. And a mixed use doesn't say you need seven dwelling units. A mixed use says, as long as you have a dwelling unit on the second floor, that's a mixed use. So for example, if the applicant didn't construct a third story and had three or four dwelling units on the second story, that's a mixed use. And that's one that is encouraged by the zoning ordinance. There's also a definition of a mixed use, which I'll concentrate on later, but I'll tell you what it says. Shall mean the dual use of a single parcel parcel of land. All parking, yard, buffer, and other requirements applicable to each individual use shall be applied to the common, to the combined use. And I think that relates to the issue of whether a density variance is needed. As you know, the burden of the applicant, the burden is on the applicant to provide testimony. And so I'm, I'm going to review briefly Mr. McDonough's testimony and say why I respectfully disagree with what he says. He first says that because the third story meets the linear height limit, that the only variance they need is for the number of stories. That's wrong. The back 30 feet of the property is supposed to have a building height of zero feet. You're not supposed to have a building there. So in addition to needing a variance for the third story, the applicant needs a linear height variance for the back 30 feet of the property. Mr. McDonough was silent on that part. He only Um, Mr. McDonough was silent on that part, part. He only had uh, had the statement that the only variance in terms of height was the third story instead of two and a half stories. And that's incorrect, cuz there's not supposed to be any height in the back thirty feet. Um, Mr. McDonough says that the downslope of the property mitigates uh, one of the variance here. Well, as you can see on the lower left-hand side of page P six, visually, and again, the land slopes downward, but visually from the pavement in front of the building and that, the bottom of that retaining wall, to the parapet, is forty point seven feet. Uh, much more than the thirty-five feet that uh, is the average. And that's what faces the public, even though you can't see this building very easily. That's what faces the public. And in fact, as uh, the applicant's attorney said, that um, you start about eighteen feet higher, and I I calculated fifteen feet higher than the sidewalk. So when you're looking, when you're standing on the sidewalk, looking toward the top of this building as proposed, um, it's like it's fifteen feet plus forty feet, much taller than anything. Now, the buildings across the street to the very top of the parapet are about forty-seven point five feet. But again, they start at the street level. So while these might be comparable in 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 terms of height, just looking at the facade, um, this is actually significantly taller in terms of elevation above sea level. Um, the slope downward um, is uh, is a steepish slope. It's about twelve percent. Uh, and that's an uncomfortable slope for parking areas, cuz that means when you open the door on the side of your car, it's gonna go all the way out and potentially hit the car next to you. So it's a difficult parking area cuz the slope. You would like to be maybe the five, maybe seven percent. This is a steep parking lot, which means that if you're opening the door uphill, it's gonna be a little difficult. And if you're opening your door downhill, um, the door is gonna kind of uh, have its own mind. Uh, Mr. McDonough says that the building acts as a buffer to the rear. I don't agree with that. Your ordinance says that a buffer is a vegetated area. Uh, and to suggest that this building is some kind of a buffer is absurd, in my opinion, because it casts a shadow, um, it has a presence, uh, and and you might mitigate some of the privacy, but the answer is, it's still there. People are gonna open, be able to open windows in the summertime, potentially. Um, there is a a c- crowding, there's a blockage of light air and open space that the neighbors to the rear should rely upon. Yes, the building is already uh, violates that, but in my opinion, adding another story is i- is further um, uh, an intrusion into what the ordinance wants. To say that the applicants to the rear ought to provide the buffer, um, first of all, that's not in, that's not what your ordinance intended. And why should someone that has an open rear yard, that wants a play area for the kids, have to eat up part of the rear yard with landscaping that benefits someone else? That's not what the ordinance is about. Um, uh, the master plan encourages mixed-use. Mr. McDonough said that multiple times. Well, mixed-use doesn't mean a third story with seven dwelling units. Mixed-use says a two-story building with one to four dwelling units um, a- a- on the second floor. Um, if you, I, on the upper left-hand side, I describe what a buffer is in in your ordinance, and it says, a buffer strip shall be planted and maintained in perpetuity with trees and shrubbery of such sizes and densities as to adequately screen the building from such a budding residential district or use. There is zero screening on this property. And it's, and it's not gonna be possible uh, to plant there to block uh, the offensiveness of the third floor. Uh, on the lower right-hand of this, I have a quote from the uh, International Building Code, the New Jersey edition. And it says that when you have a three or more stories, and the footprint is uh, let's say more than three thousand square feet, which is the case here, it's three thousand, three hundred and three, you're required to have an elevator. So what's weird, not weird, uh, the the plans don't show an elevator, which means there gotta be changes to this. Unless the applicant takes off the third story. Um, the answer is, this building will be required to have an elevator. And that's not on the plans. That hasn't been discussed, that it it, unless the applicant is gonna dig into the ground, um, that's gonna be, have an elevator override on the roof, which obviously adds to the visual impact of what's going on. Um, the Mr. McDonough says that the density standard, which is a maximum of four units, uh, doesn't apply because it's not listed in the conditional use requirements. Well, the conditional use requirements don't talk about building height. They don't talk about impervious coverage. They don't talk about setbacks. Just because the density standard is not a conditional use standard, doesn't mean it doesn't apply. And I'll repeat what the definition of mixed-use says. It shall mean dual use of a single parcel of land. All parking, yard, buffer, and other requirements applicable to each individual use shall be applied to the combined use. So this property, if you look at just the residential component, has seven units. The maximum it's permitted as four units. In my opinion, that's a density variance, and that's serious, because that's not the type of variance that the planning board can grant. That chases the, that changes the jurisdiction uh, to the Board of Adjustment. Um, again, the app, the applicant is suggesting that there is some kind of a hardship with existing conditions. The answer is, the applicant today has more building and more paving that is permitted. That's not a hardship. There's already a bonus under the current uh, development. Uh, Mr. uh, McDonough says, you know, be careful, cuz you're gonna get other uh, uses there that could be more active, such as uh, like a fast-food restaurant is a bar. Uh, Mr. McDonough forgot to tell you that, for instance, in your regulations in the B one zone, a fast-food restaurant is a conditional use. And one of the conditions is that it can't be within a thousand feet of a residential district. So this uh, argument, first of all, we're reviewing one use that's before the board now, but his statement about be careful, you might get a bar, you might get a a a fast-food restaurant. Uh, he ought to read the ordinance, uh, because that would not be permitted on the site, and it would be hard to justify um, a a building that's seven feet away from a residential property line, where it's supposed to be a thousand feet away. Uh, Mr. McDonough talked about municipal land use law purposes A, G, I, and M under NJSA forty fifty-five D dash two. He said that the uh, this use promotes the general welfare by revitalizing a building. Um, and it, it uh, provides sufficient space uh, in a ver- in an appropriate location. The master plan says, we like mixed uses. And the answer is, by not adding a story, but converting the second story into residential use, you have a mixed use. And the applicant can still adjust the architecture of the building. The applicant says that this promotes a desirable visual environment. This is a building unlike anything in the area. It has no sensitivity to the historic uh, surrounding properties. Um, it is set back in an uncharacteristic A a- area, uh, location on the property that doesn't contribute to the pedestrian traffic. Uh, this does not promote a desirable visual environment, in my opinion, and especially because of the rear setback. Uh, and then the a- the, Mr. McDonough suggested that it's more efficient use of land. Uh, I guess bigger on the same place. Well, the answer is, by going to the third story, there are not a lot of negatives. Uh, the applicant is gonna have to put in an elevator, so maybe that's another hundred thousands uh, dollars to put in an elevator. But he can, he can be more efficient if he just converts the second story to residential use, and he doesn't need an elevator, and he's likely to have sufficient amount of parking uh, even on a Saturday. So in summary, um, I don't, in my opinion, the applicant has not met the burden of proof. Um, this third story um, adds um, violates the buffer. It violates the setback. And even beyond the setback, it's a half-story more than what is permitted. This is a difficult land use environment uh, because of the traffic and the site distance on Main Street. Um, the applicant is is relying or suggesting that you plant on the neighboring property to mitigate the adverse effects of this. Uh, that's not, doesn't make any sense. And it suggests, rather than McDonough saying there's no substantial detriment, there has to be, there is some substantial detriment. And the applicant, i- it's unfair to say the applicant could, should provide the buffering that the ordinance requires on the subject property. So a two-story building uh, with, let's say, three, four units on the second, on the, on the second story, um, commercial use on the first floor promotes all of the purposes of the uh, municipal land use law. It doesn't, while it, it doesn't remedy uh, the narrow rear yard setback of six point eight feet, um, it minimizes the impact. Uh, in my opinion, if you grant this, these variances as uh, requested, there would be substantial detriment to the public good, and that would be substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And I'll repeat in the end that, in my opinion, your ordinance says that when you have a mixed-use, you look at the density for each, the requirements for each of the components. The residential density in this zone is a maximum of four units. If you grant more than four units, in my opinion, the board does not have the power to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. So um, I'm gonna ask the first question.
Uh, let me see if I can dump this exhibit here. Let's see. There we go. Okay.
You used the term violation a number of times. It is your testimony. Is it your testimony that this building is in, is in violation, was in violation of a building ordinance, uh, of zoning ordinance when it was built?
Oh, I don't know that, whether it was or not.
But you used the term violation. So do we, uh, so it is your understanding that pre-existing non-conforming is a violation?
Uh, no, it's an, it's a non-conforming. But there's no evidence, the applicant has presented no evidence of when this building was approved. So the answer is, we don't know if it was approved by variance or what the zoning was at the time. So that's, the record is silent on that. I I, rather than using a violation, I'll just say there's a non-conformity, and there's no evidence that it's, that the the building placement um, was uh, conforming at one time.
Okay, so right off the bat, we're gonna get off the record the word violation. That doesn't exist.
Doesn't bother me.
Okay, good.
Uh, the only violation is the applicant is renting space to trucks now, which is a violation of the ordinance.
Okay, so the, the next thing I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hazel. Uh, is this, if they do the the four stories, the third story, is there a requirement by code that they have to have an elevator? And the second question is, uh, if they do that based on density, does this have to go to the zoning board? Those are the two operative questions before we move any further.
To respond to the first question about the uh, whether uh, an elevator is required or not, I am not familiar with the code without having it in front of me. So I don't have a opinion that I'm comfortable with on that particular. Um, in terms of the density, this is something that we did look at before this application got to this point. And um, Mr. Stack is is correct. There is, the 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 ordinance is, in my opinion, silent on that. They do provide the the density standard for the dwelling units. But in terms of the density standard for a mixed-use building, in most of the other ordinances that I'm familiar with, that uh, there is a separate, where there is a density measure listed, it is different. And it is articulated for the mixed-use as opposed to the individual. So this, this, this ordinance does not do that. And I think an argument can be made either way, that it's silent because it's put, it's intentionally silent, and um, you know, y- y- one can take the the position that Mr. Stack is taking, that it is the 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 density of of a residential use by itself should be applied, and it's not a residential use by itself. So you know, I I, my opinion in this case is that it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. The ordinance is silent on it. That's my opinion.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Scott. Do you have any opinion on the elevator?
Hmm, I, I, uh, similar to Mr. Hazel, uh, I am not familiar with the code. Uh, it is my understanding that if there are uh, residential uses uh, on the upper floors, uh, that they would pro- potentially need to have an elevator, but I'm not sure if um, there is uh, residential uses on the first floor, uh, where they do have access, um, accessible access with the use of the list that the uh, applicant is proposing. But for uh, residential uses on the additional, on the upper floors, uh, I am not certain of the code.
Okay, thank you. So the, the next thing is, Ms. McGovern. Uh, I'm sure the board always wants to act on on the conservative methodology. Do we then refer this to the zoning board, or do we go with Mr. Hazel and say, is the, the ordinance is silent? As long as it's silent, the density s- uh, standard that is in other zones does not apply here.
I've seen this before, and if the, if it's not mentioned, if density isn't a requirement, um, some, it is a little bit of a glitch, and it may be going forward if the town wants to put a density limitation on mixed-use, but right now there isn't. And to some degree or another, your parking requirement creates the limits as to how many apartments you can have anyway. So there is a, there is a uh, there is some type of limit. It's based on the parking, um, but there's not a specific density limit, so I don't think the I don't see, there's nothing to interpret here, so I don't know why the zoning board would get it. It's not a D variance in terms of a density variance, because they are strictly abiding by what your ordinance uh, requires.
And if I may, if I remember correctly, this was
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. If I remember correctly, this was discussed before the application was um, was deemed complete, and it went before technical review, and it was determined that a density variance was not required in this instance.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get on the record everybody's opinion, because Mr. Stack has brought out the question, and I thought that it would be good that the board hears the answers.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's limited by the parking to some degree, but your ordinance is silent as to uh, physical density or a number of apartments or square footage. So uh, if that's something going forward, that um, the planning board wants to just make a recommendation to the count, town council, that might be something you wanna talk about, but right now, that doesn't apply here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go through the board. Ms. Capra, we'll go in reverse. Ms. Capra, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadozio, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
No, you asked my, my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony? Yes, Morgan? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Morgan. Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions from Mr. Stack. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Uh, Councilperson Scarper, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
Just one quick question. Um, how a common is it that an ordinance like this for mixed-use would not have a density um, limitation? Because ma- as many of our ordinances are uh, not really well-written or older, we do, I believe we do need to take a look at something like this.
Um, there's not a standard way, in my judgment, of writing a conditional use. And and again, if 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 the board is taking the position, because the word density doesn't appear in the conditional use standards, that doesn't answer the That doesn't answer the question because it, it could have, the height limit isn't in, in the, in the ordinance. And again. Your, what, what solidifies my position is your definition. Of a mixed use, which again, which says. Shall mean dual use of a single parcel of land, all parking, yard, buffer, and other requirements. Applicable to each individual use shall be applied to the common, combined use. That seems to answer the question to me.
Mm-hmm. Sounds fair to me too. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony?
I took notes. Let me try to formulate them into a question. Um, well, first and foremost, it was about the elevator, so I would like a better understanding on that. Um, and the other I heard that there should be a variance on height. I recall testimony. That the height of the building would be thirty-four feet, which is a foot less than our standard thirty-five foot.
Excuse me for interrupting. Except.
Go ahead if you have an answer to that.
Uh, Mr. McDonough said the only height issue is the number of stories. And that's one of the variances that you need. But when you say that there's a height limit of thirty-five feet, and this is thirty-four and a half feet. That presumes that the building fits within the building envelope. And again, in the, the back thirty feet of this property is not supposed to have any building at all. So to say that he doesn't need a linear height limit or a story height limit in the back thirty feet. Both variances are needed. It's not just, it's not just, you know, if the applicant had a one-story building and it was. Uh, you know, six point five, six point eight feet back from the rear property line. There's no height limit, but because the applicant is outside of the building envelope. In my opinion, you need a variance from both the story height and the linear height. And there's zero testimony from the applicant about the linear height.
Okay. Um, there was also Mr. Stack mentioned about. Parking on a Saturday. Uh, we also heard testimony that true ally at one oh five Main Street is moving into this. Uh, location from, uh, right down the street on one oh five Main Street. There has never been a complaint about. Um, parking or traffic. And it is by appointment only. So, um.
Except you look at the number of rooms there, you look at the seats, ten seats in the, in the waiting room. Uh, you know, your ordinance doesn't say, it doesn't apply if there's no complaints. The answer is your ordinance has a. A- a- and again, you're approving not this specific use. Um, any other medical office can come in here in the future. And it doesn't have to go before the town because that's the same category. Your ordinance says that there's a heightened parking factor needed for medical offices. What it was peculiar is when this application was first reviewed. And again, th- this went through a review committee, uh, and no one caught the fact. That this was medical offices and the wrong standard was used. Um, the applicant has attempted to show that. That there's enough parking, at least if you take into account shared parking. But in my opinion, the shared parking philosophy does not apply on a Saturday. Cause most residential people will be home. And this, uh, office, it, medical office will have hours, I believe it was every other Saturday. So the, the shared parking rationale, uh, does not, uh, consistently apply.
And when you say that there was a wrong standard that applied during technical review, what do you mean by that?
The, the, both the architect's plan and the initial, I think, traffic report. Talked about a standard, a parking standard of one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. That applies on the right side of the building for generic offices. But during the initial review, it was not picked up. That, uh, the medical offices has a higher standard, one per a hundred and fifty square feet.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Garena, do you have any questions?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Hmm. I just picked out this, uh, New Jersey AC five dot twenty-three dash seven dot one. In West Orange, New Jersey, a three-story building is not typically required to have an elevator unless it meets specific size. And occupancy criteria or is a public building. Generally, an elevator is required in buildings three or more stories tall. Or if any floor has three thousand square feet or more.
And the floor is three thousand three hundred and three square feet.
I'm just, eh, throwing that out to our professionals.
Could, could I, uh, uh, the architect here, could I, uh?
Mr. Pace, go right ahead.
Yep. So the dimension he's referring to is the outer dimension. Um, the interior dimension is less than three thousand square feet. Um, it's a masonry building, so the walls are very thick. Um, so if you use the outside dimension, that is that. So I was just trying to get clarification. Uh, whether the interior, which is what we would typically use, um, for a calculation like this. Uh, would suffice. So the total square footage of the interior was less than three, uh, three thousand square feet. But the exterior, because the walls are super thick, um, add up to that distance.
Uh, just, uh, w- w- one of the, one of my, one of the neighbors is an architect that alerted to me that. So he may be able to clarify that later.
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely reach out to someone to get the clarification as well. Um, but like I said, typically when the interior dimension, um, is less than three thousand, it would be okay. Like I said, the walls are super thick. Um, so we're counting a lot of dimension of, uh, bricks and such, um, outside dimension.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep that in the balance as we go forward. Um. We're gonna open this up to public questions.
Mr. Hazel has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hazel, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mrs. Beck, I just want some clarification on the, uh. You mentioned that the, you, you felt that height, both linear and a number of stories was required because. Uh, this building was within six feet of the, the rear property line where, uh, height. Of that height is not permitted. What, uh, provision of the ordinance are you taking that from?
It's, i- i- it's as, you know, as, as Mr. McDonough says, he refers to the Harlow. You know, case where you kind of look at the whole thing. And, and I just look at the height of a building. Uh, the maximum is thirty-five feet, two and a half stories. But that's, that one dimension, in my opinion, especially in terms of negative criteria. Assumes that the building is in the legal footprint.
Well, I mean.
And, and to say that, I, I just, in my opinion, um. It, it relates to the negative criteria by going up higher in an area that's not supposed to have any building. But in my, I just, it's my opinion that the applicant needs both a linear height limit variance as well as a story height limit.
So basically, based on that rationale, anything that, any building that is. Uh, technically, this building were one story, to use your example, one story and it was ten feet high. And it was less than the required thirty feet, uh, within the rear yard. That would also require a, a, a variance because.
No, I, I think you made a good point that, that, but the answer, the, the, the answer is from the point of view of the neighbor and the negative impact. There's not supposed to be any building there at all. And the other issue is that, that while the applicant is saying that we're better off because the. Site slopes downward. Uh, well, the answer is the height, at least from the point of view of the public, is over forty feet tall. Now, again, th- this relates more to the negative criteria, but I think you have a fair point. Um, that if, that if it intrudes on the, um, uh, let's say the rear setback. It doesn't, let's say, trigger a D variance there.
Thank you.
So Mr. Stack, uh, one more question. I- is it your testimony, your opinion, that the building itself, if, if it is found to be, uh, built. Within a, a variance or at the time the zone plan allowed it. Because a new story is going to be added. The building normally would, should be moved to the appropriate position so you could have a thirty-foot rear yard setback.
Um, Mr. Bagoff, if I may interject, I, I believe Mr. McDonough can offer, uh, the year in which this building was constructed. And, uh, just for our purposes, I'm unaware of any case law, ordinance, statute, or otherwise that would require a linear height variance to this effect.
I'm, I'm just asking a question. I just wanna, but, but, okay. Let Mr. Stack answer and then we can go to Mr. McDonough.
There, there, the applicant has no proof, has presented no proof that this was. Permitted by zoning. Or that a variance was granted in the past. If the applicant were not going up another story. I think there would be a hardship argument. I don't think the applicant should have to demolish the building. But when the applicant is increasing the height by another story. That I don't think the applicant can rely on a hardship condition anymore. If, if, if he wants to stick to two stories, he can make the whole thing residential if he wants, uh, but. In my opinion, uh, the way the application is framed, there's no evidence. Um, that it is a legal non-conforming use. And I would buy the hardship argument, except for the fact the applicant is making a major change.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Erble, uh, go right ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Shouldn't I be finished, ask, being asked questions before you call Mr. McDonough?
Just gonna give us the date that the building was built.
Okay, I think it was forty-seventy, said or something.
Yeah, hi, for the record, it's Sean McDonough. Sorry, my screen's not working, but, um. I believe it was the nineteen seventies that I testified to. I ta- I put the testimony on the record last.
I think it was seventy-four, he said.
Okay, so we, we know approximately or exactly the year it was built, but we're, we're still have a question. Was there a variance or not a variance? Okay, so, um, we'll go to the public. Do any members of the public have questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have a question for Mr. Stack on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have, uh, Kevin Malanga. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, West Orange. Good evening, Chairman Bagoff, members of the board.
Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Stack.
Good evening.
You said you took a tour of the neighborhoods. So you walked around the neighborhood and you saw the architectural styles of the residential. Structures that are there?
Yes.
And you saw that, would you characterize that style as? Folk Victorian or something similar to that?
I, I don't know if they're Victorian, but you know, they're kind of turn, turn of the century houses. Uh, maybe not, you know, nineteen ten, nineteen twenty, but they're all wood frame. Um, they all have slope roofs. Um, they clearly, uh, depict a, a residential style. Um, it, just from their, it, it looks like they were built, you know, all within about the same period of time. Because they seem to have the, uh, the same number of accoutrements, the same style.
And you looked at the architectural plans for the proposed building, is that right?
Yes.
And is, how would you characterize that architectural style? Is that a contemporary building rather than a?
Uh, I'll call it super contemporary, you know, it, it, uh, it, it's new suburban, I guess I would call it. Uh, but it, it, again, it doesn't reflect any of the established styles i- in the, in the area.
So in your opinion, is it incompatible visually and aesthetically?
It is incompatible in terms of its style, in terms of its shape, and in terms of its setback.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Yes, we have Ann. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, thank you. I think it's me, um, Ann Hirsch, twelve Edge Hill Road. I am in, I'm gonna say spitting distance, but it's really viewing distance of what would be the third. Um, floor. I just want, and thank you, Mr. Stack, for all your, um, insight and valuable contribution. I wondered because you mentioned that there was some talk about the, um, those I'm just gonna call as victims. Um, who aren't being paid off or, you know, we're not getting any benefit from it, but we would have to, in order to protect our privacy. Uh, maybe have more shrubs planted and so forth. I don't know if anyone's aware that those of us on, we're, we're at, there's a certain curve near the back of my home. Where we are not allowed to add extra shrubs because it would be unsafe. Because the visibility of those driving and walking would be, um. It, it, in danger. Um, although if you were, um, at a building that was way too close already. With yet another story up top, those people would have visibility into our, um, yard. But the visibility for the people who are in danger on the road, um, where we are not going to be allowed to plant shrubs. I don't know if you were aware of that.
I, I was not aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay, do any other members of the public have any questions from Mr. Stack? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Lenny Carr. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lenny Carr. I live at eighty-three Mountain Avenue here in West Orange. Good morning, Chairman Bagoff. Good morning. Uh, good, uh, good evening. Good evening, uh, members of the planning committee. Um, uh, Mr. Stack, thank you for your testimony. Um, I had a question. You testified, uh. In your description, the differences between the R one and the B one zone. And my question is, it's been mentioned many times that, uh, across the street from the B one zone. That there were, um, uh, new developments that are three stories in height. And in the B one zone, um, that, uh, those are limited to two and a half stories in height, right? And they, and, 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 and it was also mentioned a few times on the call. That because, uh, that there are buildings across the street that are three stories in height. That that justifies that there should be a, a, another story added, uh, to this building in the B one zone. Is, is that your understanding as well?
Well, the, the answer is, um, that's a, that's a completely different zone. And in my opinion. Um, you don't take the standards from another zone and in fact, a redevelopment zone. Which doesn't have to have the same limitations as a conventional zone. In my opinion, it's improper. To, uh, pick the standard from another zone and apply it to, uh, to the, to the B one zone. And, and the other issue is, uh, this building is, the, the subject building is set back. Uh, a significant distance, uh, from the front pro- from the front property line. Which means it is not really comparable with what's across the street.
I, I would agree, but they're using, uh, the buildings in the close proximity as a justification. To allow, uh, this other, uh, story to be added in a B one zone. And so my question to you, Mr. Stack, is the following. If a third story is allowed, do you believe that this would have any precedent-setting effects in the other areas of the B one zone?
Um, it, it, as a general rule, um, each application stands on its own. So would not. Automatically create a precedent, but as you know, uh. That oftentimes, just as, uh, Mr. McDonough points to buildings, you know, across the street. Um, it can be brought up to try to influence, uh, a decision, but, but technically, it doesn't set a precedent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Stack on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, uh, public questions for Mr. Stack.
Actually, we have a late hand.
Okay, come on down. Please, uh, raise your hand and be identified.
Eric Buckley, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, this is Eric Buckley. Uh, I'm the resident, um, of Blue Elm Park, who is an architect that, uh, Peter Stack mentioned earlier. Um, and I just want to go, yep.
Name and address.
Sure, it's Eric Buckley, eight Edge Hill Court.
Great.
And yes, I'm a registered architect in New Jersey. And, uh, I'll speak to the code, if, if you will.
Hang on one second, Mr. Buckley. Mi- Ms. McGovern, do we have to swear him in because he's giving.
He's going to give testimony that the board is going to accept as a testimony. Yet, yes, I have to swear you in, Mr. Buckley. But you also has to, have to put your camera on because I, I don't swear and I, I have to see you.
And Mr. Buckley, so there's two, I want to give you two options. One is you can just say things. And your testimony will be held as a person who just says something. You can be sworn in as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, who I dare you. And your testimony will be held as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Sure, uh, I can go either way, Peter. What is your, what is your take?
You should be sworn in as, and, and give your credentials.
Go right ahead, Mr. Buckley.
Can you put your camera on, please?
The option for a camera, let me just double check here.
Probably have to let him in as a panelist first, right?
Well, he's in.
Oh, he's in, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm only seeing audio, I'm sorry. Um.
He's an attendee. I can move him to panelist.
Oh, well, if he moves to panelist, maybe then you'll, you'll come up with a, an option to be on video.
It's, he's coming in now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone, uh, do you hear me and see me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, now we can. Okay, please raise your right hand.
Sure.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and you state your name for the record?
Sure, it's Eric Buckley.
Mr. Buckley, if you tell us about, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Buckley, can you uh tell us about your education? And are you a licensed architect?
Yes.
President of the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, I graduated NJIT uh with a bachelor's of architecture in two thousand and ten. And I hold a current uh, architecture degree in New Jersey.
And have you?
License, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Have you, have you looked at the subject property? Have been to the subject property?
Yes.
And are you prepared to render an opinion as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Correct, yes.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, yes, I wanted to speak to the uh, the quote, um, the code um, quote that uh, Peter brought up about the elevator. Um, and yes, that is from IBC, and as you stated, there is also something within the ordinance for, for West Orange. Um, and uh, the architect Jason Peist, he stated that um, the area is you know, based on the masonry portion of the building, but the third floor is wood framed, so those super thick walls that he stated, um, they don't exist on the third floor. It's wood framed. Um, so actually, I scaled off his drawings, and what I'm seeing is roughly thirty-one hundred, thirty-five square feet, which is over that allotted three thousand square feet. Yeah, so that, that is in relation to, uh, relationship to the, to the quote about requiring an elevator uh, if any story is over three thousand square feet, uh, and it's three stories or, or, or more.
Is that the sum of your testimony, sir?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then I will have the members of the board ask questions if they will. Um. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No, not this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Ma'am McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarper, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No, I do not.
Mr. Alper, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No, thank you.
Mr. Wilk, do you have any question for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No questions.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
I guess it's not, the question's not for Mr. Buckley, it's a response from their architect, but I'm just wondering if uh, I don't know who to throw this out to, can they, can they bring the building back in the back? Can they put it, if they're gonna add on, can they kick it? Well, I guess you said, Mr. Stack said, the setback's thirty feet, and that's the, the depth of the building, so they can't, they can't put the addition on the top floor in the correct setback. Is that correct? Who knows the answer to that? That's it.
I have a feeling that's a question for the
Yeah.
applicants architect.
I don't know, I don't have any questions for Mr. Buckley.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No question at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. uh, Cordozia, do you have any question for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Capra, do you have any question for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Hey, Hazel, do you have any question for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
Yeah, just uh, by way of, I'm just trying to get a little more clarification. You're indicating that the third floor is going to be framed. Isn't the third floor within the existing um envelope, or they're taking it off and building one over it? What, what is it your, what is your understanding of?
Yeah, my understanding is that the existing masonry structure is for the first two floors, and it's wood framed on the third floor. So naturally, the inside portion of the wall uh would happen to be um, we'll call it, well, the, the, the um envelope, we'll call it, is uh larger. The actual net area is larger because of the wall thickness being um thinner. Uh, you know, two by six stud or two by four, whatever they're planning on doing, is less than an eight inch um concrete wall. So, but even so, at the, at the second floor, it, it is, I'm calculating three thousand forty-five square feet. Uh, so e- either way, um, the, the numbers are over three thousand square feet, uh, the existing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley, do you have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony?
Uh, no questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Buckley on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Bagoff, or Chairman Bagoff, I just have a, a handful of questions for him.
Okay, let me just finish with the public, and then I'm gonna come to you, Mrs. Zerbal. So we're gonna close the public question, and Mrs. Zerbal, you're up, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Buckley, uh, your calculation was based on scaling off of the design?
Correct, and as long as the architect's drawings are scaled properly, they, these calculations should be correct.
Okay, but you did not actually see the CAD file or review the actual dimensions?
Correct.
Good.
But yes, I would like, I would like confirmation on that, if that's the case.
Yes, and uh, we have Mr. Peist here who can, who can respond.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Peist.
Yep. Um, yeah, I mean, right now, we're, we're uh looking at the calculations on the third floor. Um, the stair is moving up uh to go on to the third floor. The floor area, if you don't include the stair, um, which we're getting down to the real knitting ready on it, because it's not technically part of the floor area, because it's an open uh space. Um, we're well below the three thousand square feet on the third floor.
It doesn't look like the stairs within the shaft, so therefore it wouldn't be uh excluded.
I could throw a shaft in there, but like I said, we're, we're talking minuscule square feet. Um, like I said, we could verify everything, but the intent would be to be less than three thousand square feet.
Ultimately, we're talking about um, meeting a code, so it can't be wishy-washy.
Hmm. Like I said, the, the adjustments can be made to reduce um slightly. With that, like I said, the stair, if I don't include the stair and put a shaft in, then that's not included as part of the floor area.
And I guess, uh, question I do have for you, if you don't mind, um, there aren't, the, the stairs look like the only means of egress. And the West Orange housing uh requires a second means of egress from all uh residential units.
Well, that, that would be under the new construction. This is under the NJ UCC, which has the building code requirement uh, based on occupancy from the third floor. Um, so we should be okay from the number of occupants that we have.
Let me just pull up the code.
Uh, just to, just to be clear, I don't know if we want to belabor the point. We'll be full, fully compliant with the code.
Yeah, well, so what I'm quoting is the housing code of the township of West Orange, fourteen dash eight dash uh point eleven dash A, and it says, there shall be a second means of egress for all dwelling units except in single-family dwellings, which dwelling units are located in a basement or above the first level of any structure. So that would supersede um, any other codes that you're um specifying.
I mean, I, we'd have to get clarification on that, but like I said, typically under the NJ UCC, we met the requirement for the one means egress.
Yeah, but part of your due diligence should be to look into the township codes as well.
Okay. Mr., so Mr. Peist, I think that i- it's up to you. Do you believe that this application fill, fulfills the requirements of the ordinance?
We would meet all the requirements for the ordinance for the elevator um, with whatever minor adjustments we would make to the interior um, to that.
And how do you plan to address accessibility to the third floor? Because anything over four um, units requires accessible and accessible means egress.
Uh, it's per floor.
What, uh, could you explain?
So, under the NJ UCC, it's per floor, not total.
You're adding a floor to this building, therefore it becomes a new building, therefore you are required to meet.
It, it falls back under the NJ UCC. Again, like I said, we can debate the, the code, but at the end of the day, it goes back to the
I mean, I, okay, it's accessibility code, it's not any NJAC. But if, if I'm quoting the NJAC, it, it falls back to the, the ANSI, which is the accessibility code, so.
So, you're, you're referring back to the barrier-free code?
Correct.
Um, like, again, th- this, we meet the requirements of what we have to for the uh barrier-free uh requirement.
Within the units, correct, but you don't have an ex- accessible means of egress. So if someone were in a wheelchair, there's no way for them to get to the third floor.
It's not required under the current code.
So why even have accessible units if you can't get to them? Or it's
And it's not required.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, gentlemen, is now we're having a code war. Uh, what I would like to do is we're going to leave this to our building department and to decide exactly what the code is, and uh, second means of ingress, uh, of egress, and the elevator. So all those will be conditions of the application, if the application is uh voted in favor of. Okay? So that way, whatever the code requires will be done. And thank you, Mr. Buckley, for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, Mr. Zerbal, uh, anybody else, or we're pretty much done? You want to sum up everything? Or do you want to answer any other questions uh in re- response, rebuttal to Mr. Stack?
Um, we have a, a hand raised. Uh, uh, he's back. Stan Shapiro.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay, the member of the public, one minute, Mr. Zerbal, the member of the public that would like to speak is?
Stan Shapiro.
Okay, go right ahead.
Go ahead.
You have three minutes, sir. Just state your name for the record, please.
Mr. Shapiro. He's not muted.
Okay. Mr. Shapiro, could you please state your name for the record? We can't hear you.
Hmm, not sure what's wrong with that.
He has his hand, yes, he does have his hand raised.
He does, and he's not muted.
Okay. I don't know what else to say.
Hello?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shapiro.
Oh, God.
Please state your name for the record. Mr. Shapiro?
I'm not sure what that was all about, but Mr. Hazel is raising his hand, too.
He, he found something funny. Mr. Hazel, go right ahead, sir.
You're on mute, Jerry.
Sorry about that. This is a question I had before uh the applicant's architect removed himself, uh, was done. I just wanted to confirm what exactly the building, what exactly, how, how exactly this is going to be constructed? Right now, the building as it stands, is it at thirty-five feet tall? That, that's my understanding based on the plans.
I am slightly under thirty-five feet tall.
Slightly under, okay. So basically, the, the envelope, if you will, or the, 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 the the envelope, the, the building envelope as, that exists now, is going to be essentially the same. It's the you know, basically the cake will be the same, it's just the slices are gonna be different.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Shapiro is back.
Hey, Mr. Shapiro, uh, state your name for the record, and please ask your question, sir.
He just unmuted, but he still, we still can't hear him.
Can he type his question in chat? Mr. Shapiro, can you type your question in chat?
I don't know if they have access to that. I can change the
Alright, um.
I can change.
Yes, Mr. Shapiro. Okay. Didn't work.
Should I try promoting him to panelist?
Motivate panels, let's give that a try.
Okay.
Please.
Let's see if that works. It's not allowing me to do that either.
Okay.
Wait, here it comes, here it comes. Mr. Shapiro, are you here? All right, you need to unmute. I can see you. I could, there you go.
If this still doesn't work, you should be able to use chat now that he's a panelist.
That's very true. Oh, now we got you, maybe.
Mr. Shapiro, can you hear us? Say your name for the record, please? Or go into the chat box and type your, uh, type your question, please, and for who it's for? Okay, I think we've exhausted our efforts here. Uh, Mr. Shapiro? We could, you have to unmute yourself or no?
It's not working.
Headphones are not working, okay? Sorry, sir. Okay, uh, that will end this portion of the application. Mrs. Zerbal, you want to sum up? Or say anything else?
Yes, I'll just very briefly, I'll sum up. Uh, we've heard from uh, a number of experts, uh, our professional planner, our professional engineer, our uh, professional architect, um, and our traffic engineer, uh, who've all provided testimony to the effect that, you know, this application satisfies the requirements uh for the granting of a C variance as the uh, under the flexible C balancing test. As the, um, sorry. The uh benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. As we asked this, this board, uh, grant our application permitting the addition of a third story, um, subject to the conditions that we had discussed previously.
Okay, so uh, Ms. McGovern, can you discuss uh, the conditions that we've uh described so far?
It's gonna take a while because there are a lot of them.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have our standard conditions, and then specific to this application. Uh, applicant will agree and abide by all the suggestions and directives of the Matrix, or Matrix reports. Uh, applicant will abide by the township tree ordinance. A white roof will be constructed. HVAC units on the roof of the building will be moved and consolidated at the front of the building, so to provide consideration for the neighbors behind the building. Applicant shall install and maintain a sound insulation partition wall to muffle the sound of the HVAC system on the roof. No portion of the building may be used as an event space. Applicant agrees to fully comply with the noise ordinance. Applicant will mill, replace, and re-stripe the entire parking lot. The proposed lighting will not have any spillage onto neighboring properties. Applicant agrees to clean out and confirm to the satisfaction of the township engineer that the existing stormwater system is functioning as intended. No exterior lighting on the rear of the building. All debris will be cleaned up. Parking spaces will be one ADA, one, uh, two EV and twenty-one standard, removing the front regular space uh, from the plans to allow for better turnaround. Applicant will install and maintain car bumper stops to keep vehicles from overhanging onto the walkway. Applicant will regrade the slope for the ADA parking space and will submit plans showing that the re- showing that regrading to the township engineer for approval. Trench drain grates will be repaired or replaced to make sure they lay flat. Applicant must replace the current wooden fence and replace the fence with a concrete or block wall. Applicant will install a fence or some other control to prevent neighbors from parking in the parking lot. Applicant must supply the lighting fixture table. Applicant must supply sewer calculations to the township engineer to demonstrate if there is sufficient sewer capacity and must show the connection point and that the lateral can handle the sewer connection. Applicant must change the sewer pipes from eight inches to twelve inches. Applicant shall submit the grading plan for the driveway apron. The fire subcode official shall evaluate the parking lot for fire lane markings, and applicant shall abide by the direction of the fire, fire code official regarding the necessary striping. Applicant shall submit a full-sized sheet demonstrating site triangle. Applicant will submit deed restriction for one of the apartments designating the specific unit and description of the number of bedrooms. Applicant will comply with paragraph two point one seven of Matrix's April one, twenty twenty-five addendum to include sewer connections calculations uh, that can handle the lateral and propose increased flow. That's not duplicate from the other I just said. The applicant shall list all conditions of a, of medical office use is limited to the unit one on the first floor of fourteen uh, one thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet. No medical uh one thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet. No medical use in the second commercial space uh which is one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Applicant to submit parking plan uh for shared parking for medical office use and residential use. Applicant will install privacy film in the rear of the third floor windows and the building department to review the need for an elevator and additional means of egress.
I would also offer that a condition that the the parking lot will not be rented out to any trucks or any other vehicles once the CFO is obtained for this building. Only uh guests and uh people who rent there will be able to use the parking lot.
Okay.
I wanted everybody to hear that first, and unlike usual, we're gonna go to public comment next. So the but the public can hear about all the conditions that are proposed. One of the condition I would uh offer that um if the neighbor neighbors wish, the applicant will place screening uh on their land that they will have to maintain in perpetuity at the expense of the applicant. Uh, that will be arranged with that will be made, an offer will be made. The uh neighbors can reject the offer, but it'll be a good faith offer by the uh applicant as a condition. It's not something the board can require them to do. But the applicant has said in the past they would, and if uh if approved, it is a condition of the application. So to that end, now we'll go to public comment. Do any uh do any members of the public have comment about this application? Please raise your hand, have been identified. You have three minutes to speak to the board.
Yes, we have Jonathan Barton. Please state your name and address for the record. You need to unmute. Jonathan, you need to unmute. All right, we're gonna come back to Jonathan. We're gonna go to Jamie C.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, hi, yes, Jamie Copperweight. I don't know how to change my name from Jamie C, but um I live at uh eleven Edge Hill Road. And um I just, is this just general comment on the on whether we? Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate the conditions that have been made. Um, I just wanna speak against this uh variance being uh granted on a um notion of uh like just fairness to the property behind them. There was some talk about in the beginning on the part of Mr. Cox that um, you know, Llewellyn Park or somehow this is some, you know, that we've got all this space or something, but I I can pretty much guarantee you that he has more property around town than uh the people who live directly behind him and um it seems like the mode to push for this third floor is to enhance the value of his investment. And I just think that's unfair to do that at the expense of somebody else's home investment, which is, I know, a very big investment for uh the people who live directly behind this. And um I just don't, I don't think that's fair. So I don't think a variance should be granted. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Uh, do any of the members of the public have comments about this application? Please raise your hand identified, and let's have the clock up for the comments, please, for three minutes.
Yes, sorry, forgot about that.
Okay.
Rita Di Matteo.
Go right ahead, please say the name for the record and go right ahead.
Uh, my name is Rita Di Matteo. I live at eleven Rocky Way in West Orange. Um, I also object to this uh variance. I feel that uh the building uh with the third story on it will cast a shadow and it will have an overbearing presence that crowds the neighborhood uh Llewellyn Park, which is directly behind it. A historic uh uh neighborhood that is listed on the National Register and State Register of Historic Places. It's a historic district. The building is only seven feet away from this residential district. And while I heard this evening that we don't know how, whether there was a variance granted when it was built or not. The fact is that building a third story on it at this point really in 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 my opinion uh creates an intrusion that should not be approved by the board. I think that West Orange, you know, we've worked with the West Orange Historic Commission on many occasions, and I think West Orange tries to be sensitive to the historic charac- character uh of West Orange and particularly Llewellyn Park, which is part of the Main Street corridor. And uh we would not like to see uh an intrusion like this. Um, as Mr. uh Steck said, the buildings on either side of this property also are different in historic characteristics from this building. And again, adding the additional story on it just makes it much more intrusive in the streetscape. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Ann. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Yes, thank you. Ann Hirsch, twelfth Edge Hill Road. Thank you so much. Again, I'm um a a behind what uh is being proposed. Um, and as Rita was just saying, the looming presence is a little bit different from when we first moved into Llewellyn Park. We were told, for instance, we can't have a a fence because that wasn't part of the romantic period. And in good faith, we've been following, not just us, but everyone here follows a certain uh plan to keep the historical nature. Having a looming non-romantic period um uh shade giving when we were expecting sunlight um privacy taking away when we had privacy um view taking. We have a lovely view right now. We are not going to have that anymore. We're not being um aside from the offer of we can plant some shrubs, which as I mentioned before, my property, we cannot plant shrubs anymore. But um it we we're, our property taxes have just gone up an amazing amount, very much. Why are we not being protected? Like, what are we getting for it? We need to be protected. This is something we need to be protected from. We, the 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 houses that are around this area had been originally grandfathered in. They are not the big mansion things that some of somebody might have mentioned that when they think of Llewellyn Park homes. This is not that. These are smaller homes with with little backyards that deserve to be protected. Won't somebody please protect us? And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public have any other comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jonathan Barton. Unmute Jonathan. Up, I heard a click. Jonathan, can't hear you. Uh, okay, he's gone. All right, we have uh Joe Sweeney.
Go right ahead.
Please state your name and address again.
Gerald Sweeney, twenty-four Oak Bend, uh Llewellyn Park, West Orange. First, uh, I wanna say that the approving this does not provide any of the real benefits they wanted uh to provide the residents, the second floor, third floor. People are gonna have to walk a hundred twenty-six feet. They're gonna go up essentially uh four stories. They're gonna have to walk unless that elevator is installed. It's gonna be burdens. The only residents can do that will be uh well, actually, basically exclude people with young children, elderly people. It's only the athletic that are gonna willing to uh do that. Second, it would not help the downtown because the downtown standards have pretty much been set forth in the guidelines for downtown, which values aesthetics. The sample of what's been done lately in downtown is the Edison Lofts. That's beautiful. That's across the street. By contrast, this will make permanent this ugly, long parking lot up front with a massive building in the back that is not non-conforming. As to the variances and the uh the detriment, no variances should be granted for the either the setback or the height. Those are intended to protect uh life, uh light air and open space. And here, huge shadows would be cast in back of it. Uh, and that's an important element of of one of the purposes of the uh both the zoning ordinance and the municipal uh land use laws. Um, it's also to uh preserve uh uh privacy. All of this would be allowing the third floor will interfere with the privacy from people on the side and the back. Third, it is not um uh won't main continuity of appearance in the surrounding buildings. It's wholly inconsistent with the surrounding buildings. Uh, that building, if you grant it, you essentially make the downtown a place where there'll be a missing tooth. The missing tooth is just the point where this property is. You come along, all the buildings are up to the sidewalk. All the residential buildings, the access is within about thirty feet. This one, you have this massive and ugly and steep parking lot. Um, the uh, so that you got privacy and also the uh the building as added would be disproportionate mass, character size and height to any of the adjacent buildings or even uh immediately adjacent or anything on that side of the road. In short, this application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Amanda Barton. Go ahead, Amanda.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Amanda Barton at ten Edge Hill. Um, as we've established, we're the neighbors directly to the west of this uh property in question. Uh, we, my husband Jonathan and I, we we are relatively new homeowners. We were late in buying our first home uh due to my prolonged medical training. And you know, we really feel at home in West Orange. Our kids go to public school here. They also love it here. We don't own multiple properties. This house is our entire life savings, our whole nest egg. And we bought it knowing that this building, which really never should have been built where it is, but was something we were gonna have to live with. Uh, but you know, we also trusted that the zoning laws for West Orange would would prevent anyone from making it even worse than it already is. Uh, we believe it's been shown already that there are multiple issues with this proposal. The only conditions for mitigating these issues, uh the landscaping that has been proposed, while we do appreciate that, that that takes up uh our yard area, which is already very small, half an acre. Uh, and those conditions don't don't account for the sunlight issues and many of the other issues that have been mentioned. Um, I think the applicant has failed to show that there would be any legitimate benefit adding a third story to this building rather than just repurposing the existing structure. Um, if this application's approved, um essentially running roughshod over the regulations that are designed to protect tax-paying homeowners in West Orange like us, it 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 not only materially devalues mine and my husband's investment, it it really undermines the confidence that people can have in these systems of local government. Um, we urge you to please consider the detrimental impact this would have on our property and our our young family, not to mention its its disregard for the historic community of Llewellyn Park, um while I think in many people's opinion, not adding significant value to the downtown. Thank you. Uh, also, my husband Jonathan uh is having audio trouble. Is it okay if he speaks on uh my account?
Absolutely. Go right ahead. We'll reset the clock when he start.
I'm so sorry about that. Um, it's privacy setting on my phone. That's really embarrassing. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I just, I wanted to echo some of my wife's sentiment, but um you know, just to to be really honest, um, I wanna be clear that we are not opposed to development. And we do support vibrant revitalized downtown. We're excited about the idea of that. Um, as she mentioned, our our children go to school here. Um, you know, we're relatively young homeowners. It's a really long time to get there. Um, but if you took a moment to honestly look at this particular building, I know it can feel abstract when we're facing people speaking before the board, but if you stood in front of it, I think everyone would understand why we're so vehemently opposed to this. Um, it 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 doesn't serve any particular goal for revitalizing downtown. Um, what's being proposed is kind of a bulky, unattractive structure that already looms over our backyard. We've accepted living in a shadow currently, and we knew what we were getting into when we bought our home, but we never imagined that a third story would be added to the building that already sits so close to our property line. So we understand the appeal of fixing up the facade. But we see this building every single day more than anyone else, right next to it. And we are saying plainly, we would rather it stay exactly as it is than have it quote-unquote improved by having adding another fifteen feet in height. Now, we're being put in a position where to preserve any sense of privacy or or, you know, the beauty of our property uh that we may have to plant a buffer on our own property just for a developer to squeeze in a few more apartments. And it just doesn't seem fair. Um, and it doesn't feel like responsible planning. So um I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, we are real people. We are residents uh of of West Orange. We love this town. Our children love their schools. Um, and we are looking forward to living here for a very long time. And uh we really appreciate it if the board would not kind of add insult um to injure injury on on this particular property. So thank you so much for your time and and for being patient after I had technical issues.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Heat Shelby.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, hi. Um, as a uh five Edge Hill Court, uh, West Orange, New Jersey. As a thirty-year resident um of the town of West Orange and as a commissioner of the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission in town, I am supportive of a healthy and vibrant downtown, but in balance with historic preservation. I really urge you all to think about the impact that um this type of development will have seven feet from the property lines of one of New Jersey's preeminent historic properties. And excuse me, what I am seeing is that a property that was non-conforming is acting as asking or requesting is second non-conforming use. That will enhance the applicant's property and add renewed notables for the town, um sorry, ratables for the township. Yet the neighboring property values would be greatly impacted. It is um it is a hu- a visible intrusion to have a third story added to this building. And I really hope that you will consider the weight of um this applicant's request heavily in terms of how it will impact uh the historic nature of Llewellyn Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the co- public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Stan Shapiro back.
Uh, yes, can you hear me now? Yeah, sorry about that. I was having some difficulties with my mic or computer. Um, so I I uh, this is Stan Shapiro. I live in Llewellyn Park at twelve Edge Hill Road near near where this um application is, the property of this application. And I uh oppose and I request that uh the board reject this application for um for the variance. Uh, I wanna, you know, there was an argument or a discussion was made and the applicant uh applicants representatives or maybe some of the, somebody affiliated with the board was interpreting the um, the conditional use rules contrary to Mr. Steck. Mr. Steck uh pointed out that that all the requirements, including the density requirements, would apply to both the uh residential and the commercial use. Um, uh, it says, it says all other requirements, but the the um the argument that that because the that notwithstanding that that language in the in in the um the conditional use provision, uh that all other requirements would apply. The the argument that somehow if you're using it for a residential use, there's a density limited limit. And then if you add a, you make it a mixed use and add a commercial use to it, that density limit would go away and you could go and add more. It that plus the commercial, it makes no sense. That that is an illogical, unreasonable interpretation of the ru- of the rules I respectfully submit. And it shouldn't be uh applied to this application that way, that the the density. Now, the density use that they wanna use, add another store for a story to add three or four more apartments on the uh um, it ju- it doesn't apply to a hardship. The if I heard the applicant, he has a medical practice, there's sufficient um space uh on the on the ground floor for his medical practice, and he could have the residential uni- uh units on the existing second floor. It's really just to enhance for It's really just to enhance for himself the value, uh, of, of the property has. It's not a hardship to use it. Now, uh, they say they don't know if there was a, a variance or how they, that, uh, building got built, put up, uh, without the buffer all the way on the, on the edge. It's clearly, uh, an intrusion on the, on the neighboring properties as it, as it exists. We don't know why or how that happened before, but now to go ahead and make it that much worse by adding another floor, that's not logical. That's, that's just making it worse. It should, the, the, to, to benefit the, the Main Street corridor. If you're going to renovate, you should be moving that property up to, up to the sidewalk line, relocating it so that it conforms to the, to the, uh, abutting properties on Main Street. Anyway, I thank you. Oh, one last thing. Uh, this notion that there's only one, I, when I heard the, the debate of the, uh, of the architect, that they have, uh, a third floor with no elevator and only one means of egress and, and in the emergency, we'll have three or four residential units up there. That's what this board is gonna allow? That if in case of there's a fire, that those people have only one way down? That's, whether or not the codes, they're gonna look at those codes, but use common sense. That's not the variance we should be doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any, uh, comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any. Oh, wait, sorry. Lenny, Lenny Carr. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, good, good evening. It's Lenny Carr from eighty-three Mountain Avenue. Thank you again, uh, planning board. Thank you again, mayor, uh, for hearing us out. I will say for the record that I actually sit on your side of the seat most evenings. I was appointed to the state investment council, uh, by the governor. So I hear, uh, the public's comments all the time about how we're the fiduciaries of the state's monies and better ways to do it. So I appreciate the service that you're contributing tonight. And my, 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 my statement is following on the statements of my neighbors, uh, around West Orange who have lived here for a long period of time. And that is, on the technical perspective, Mr. Steck raised excellent points. On the rationale, there is some serious objections. The one point that I'll make that I think wasn't made by the previous speakers is if you take a look at where this property sits, it is directly in the middle of the Edison Historical Site and the Llewellyn Park Residential Historical Neighborhood, right square in the middle. And you would expect that that significant property would strive to have some type of historical characteristics embedded in it. And instead, you heard from a developer who doesn't want to abide by the historical characteristics in order to prove, uh, improve the downtown, that all of us have worked hard to improve and all of us have worked hard to create a better West Orange through our community and through our efforts. You heard of a developer who says that in exchange, and I look at deals all the time for the state, in exchange of making some surface changes to the exterior, we ask this planning board to give us a significant variance to add a third floor, where there are no other third floors in this, um, in this neighborhood. But give us a third floor here. Give us the permission to do it. And that third floor actually has no, has, you listen to the architect, the architect's like, oh, we don't meet this code, we'll just add the small thing. They wanted, they wanna do the least amount in order to gain the most value for that property. That doesn't sound like an investment. That sounds just like profit taking. And I think West Orange is more than that. And I wish this planning board would just consider the impact it would have to Llewellyn Park. All of us have, have, have been on these calls just as you have and have listened and, and have listened to these arguments. We ask that it consider the impact that it's gonna have to the Edison changes because it will survive long past this board's time on the planning committee. And I wanna live here in a beautiful neighborhood with people who contribute. And my neighbors do too, and all of West Orange does that. So I kindly and respectfully ask this planning committee to reject the variance application. It has not met the hardship requirement. And I thank you again.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any ques, have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Sophie. Please state your name and address for the record. She keeps moving around. Go ahead, Sophie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sophie Lubin, Eight Edge Hill Court. So I also live on the other side of, um, I live in Llewellyn Park. I can see this building from my home. We moved to the park about two years ago and, um, truly are in support of the revitalization of West Orange. You know, we had high hopes for the downtown, for the Main Street when we moved here. And moved to the park because of the historic nature, um, of course, and of, um, Thomas Edison's museum. We, um, the, the, the current building, I think we can all agree, as it is today, is very unsightly. And we are huge proponents of someone doing something about that. But the proposed design, as we've kind of drummed on and on about, has absolutely no historical value, no historical relevance. I don't think that even, even was part of the conversation when that building was being designed. There's absolutely, from a material standpoint, from an architectural language standpoint, no connection to anything on that street. So yes, it is already an eyesore and we are a hundred percent in support of, of that building becoming more, you know, beautiful and functional, but that is not what we're talking about right now. And, um, as we've discussed, the third story is only adding value to the property owner and not to the surrounding areas, um, not to Llewellyn Park. And, you know, in fact, they've really made no effort to see what, you know, what the view was like from our side of the fence until the, uh, push came to shove and we really, um, had to invite them over. But the, there was no, there was no effort made for them to see the perspective from the west view, uh, which is extremely concerning. I think, um, it was the applicant's attorney at the beginning of the call that, that said that this, um, this variance would improve relationships with the home, the homes that surround it, but to not even consider those neighbors at the upfront and during the research process, um, when looking at the view and the true impact, I think speaks volumes about the disregard that was, um, the attitude of disregard for the neighbors and for the sunlight and for the privacy and for, um, the property value of those neighbors. So I would really urge the board to turn down this application and this variance and, um, consider the, again, the historical nature of our town and where this property sits and the homeowners who have invested heavily in this town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Seeing none.
Okay, so we're closed public comment. Okay, do any members of the planning board have any comments or would anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, Chairman Bagoff, before we...
Go right ahead, Mr. Gerble.
Uh, Ms. McGovern, if you could just read back what that last condition was, I didn't quite catch it.
Okay, um. Let's see if I can, I'm trying to work on the, the wording on it. "Applicant will make an effort to work with the neighbors bordering the rear of the property to plant trees or shrubs should the neigh, neighbors desire," uh, which would be maintained by those neighbors.
Okay, all right, I just have a, a concern about enforceability of that, um, potential condition 'cause it's really beyond the scope of site plan application or approval to require off-site improvements on adjoining properties.
Yes, it is, but, but the applicant, the applicant did, did make that representation when we first started. So I'm just parroting what the applicant, what the applicant offered way back when.
Of course, of course. I know we're perfectly willing to do that, um, but I, I suppose, um, Ms. McGovern and I can tweak the language to make something work.
Okay, well, I can write it. "Applicant will make reasonable efforts."
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGovern. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do any members of the planning board want to make a motion? Mr. Alper.
I had a couple of questions, I think, first, um...
All right, ahead, Ms. Alper.
Did we have testimony on the hours of the day that the most impacted property would be newly shaded? You know, how many more hours than what they're currently in the shade? I, I don't recall if there was.
I don't recall hearing that.
The only, I think the only testimony was Mr. Stack who drew the line to show where the shade was at nine AM.
In February, yeah, when the shadows are longest.
But not, there was nothing on how long that was there before it was...
That's correct.
No.
Um, my second thing is, I know he's not yet a planning board member, but if the incoming planning board member is still in the audience and as a fire official has anything to add on the second means of egress question, I'd like to hear that. And I'd like to make sure that depending on what that answer is, I don't remember if we made a condition regarding that, but there should, there maybe should be a condition regarding that.
Well, we, we...
There is a condition, just so you know, uh, 'cause I did add that after the testimony. Building department to review need for elevator and additional means of egress. So there is a condition in here for that.
Okay, do we need to hear from fire on that or are we...
We could, we could add to the condition, the fire subcode official will evaluate, uh, the, the overall plan.
Mr. Norberin had his hand raised.
Right ahead, Captain. You can pro, you can promote him.
Okay.
To the board.
Okay, he's coming in. He should be here in a second.
Okay.
My pause.
Okay, uh, just so everybody knows, uh, Captain Norberin will be appointed to the planning board. He is presently a captain in the West Orange Fire Department and he is a, uh, code offic, he has, is licensed code official.
So, um, just to, to piggyback off of what you just said, I would definitely refer to the fire subcode official to confirm, but, uh, as I listened to, um, the application, that was definitely a, a thought process of mine was the, the egress in the back. Being a third story, only one way out, uh, definitely poses a problem, but I would have to check with, again, the fire subcode just to ensure that, uh, it would be compliant.
Thank you.
Okay, so if something is not compliant, it's not gonna be allowed to be built.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm aware of that. I just wanted to ensure that, uh, you know, I would refer to him prior to making a, an assumption.
Yeah, so the building subcode, the fire subcode official would have to look at the plans and say that, uh, X, Y, or Z means of egress would be, uh, acceptable under the code.
Yeah, if, if that ends up requiring something like a fire, an external fire escape, would that come back to us the way it just did for Community House?
You can put that as a condition.
Yes.
You can add that to the condition, build it. Uh, right now it reads, "Building Department and Fire Subcode Official to review the need for an elevator and additional means of egress." And if either... Either are required.
They'd have to come back, 'cause the plans would change.
Uh, must return to the board.
And same for elevator, if the elevator ends up being required and the structure has to go even higher to accommodate that.
Right, we change in plans for those items. Okay.
Okay, I think those were my questions. I think Mayor McCartney's got her hand up next.
Great.
Thank you.
Ma'am McCartney.
Chairman, it sounds like you're getting ready to take a vote and we don't have this information. I don't feel ready to vote at this moment when we have these outstanding questions about, particularly the elevator. It sounds like you're making a, a condition, but yet we, I don't feel that this is actually complete.
Then we can go through the board. We can, uh, one option is to poll the board and see if the board ha, feels they have enough information to vote on it. If the board does not, then the applicant has the right to ask for a vote or can delay till these pieces of information are brought to the board for our information. So, Mayor, would you like...
I appreciate that. I do appreciate that because I just, I don't like the idea of putting the conditions and then assuming this is all gonna happen and then we're going to get it back. I'm not really comfortable with that at all.
Mayor, are you asking the chair to poll the board?
Yes.
Okay, good. So a, at this time, I'm going to poll the board and the question is to the board members, you feel that, uh, based on the testimony, uh, the objectors' testimony, Mr. Steck, and public comment, you have enough information to make a reasonable decision based on the law and ordinance? And I'm gonna go through the board, you'll say yea or nay, and then we'll count. And, um, Yamalet, you'll take the count?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino, yes, we can vote or no, you need more information?
No.
No, we need, no, you need more information, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor McCartney, uh, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
I'm saying no, we need more information.
Councilperson Scarp, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
No.
Okay, Mr. Alper, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
No, we need more.
Mr. Wilks, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
Um, no.
Mr. Klein, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
Uh, no, we need more information.
Mr. Morgan, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
No, we need more information.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cadoza, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
No.
Ms. Caffrey, yes, we can vote or no, we need more information?
No.
My vote is no, we need more information. Now, I'm going to ask the applicant's attorney, you heard the, minded the board, you can still ask for the board to vote if you so choose. If you want to hold off and have more information for a subsequent meeting, we can do that. Up to the applicant.
Uh, could we just get a, um, concise list of what information the board is looking for?
Yes. Absolutely. Okay, uh, Mayor McCartney, what, what pieces of information were you looking for that have not been presented?
I am looking for, particularly on the elevator, ingress and egress.
Second means of egress. Okay.
And initially I had asked that question about the height of the building. We, I heard testimony that it was thirty-five feet, uh, thirty-four feet, I'm sorry. It sounds less than what we are accustomed to in all the houses in the area, so I would like that to be confirmed.
Okay, so you'd like to know what the heights of the houses are in the area and what the, the fin, the finished product, how, height of this building is?
Right.
We also wanna know what the structure of the third floor is. Is it going to be wood, is it going to be mason, uh, masonry?
And the other question that just came up too with Mr. Carr's, uh, question is the, we didn't really talk about the, um, the facade, the facade of the building and any features and what the building would look like and is it, you know, how will it be resurfaced?
I think, I think the applicant presented pho, uh, pictures, uh, renderings that are on our website, but we could also have testimony about that.
Were they colored, were they colored renders?
Yeah, they're colored rendering. They, they're on our website, but we could ask the applicant to provide testimony about the materials. And he's all, the applicant's also heard that people in Llewellyn Park have, uh, asked for things that are more in a historic nature that may or may not occur, but that was some of the public comment.
How about, can we get a proper shadow study? I don't know, it's probably not required based on the height, but that drawing Mr. Stack provided is one moment in one day.
We can ask the applicant and the applicant may or may not do it. So we're coming up with a list of questions that will help the board make a decision.
And Chairman, to that point too about the shadowing, maybe it's a timeframe, you know, as the sun rises in the east, you know? Right. What that looks like because... Yeah, that might be a timeframe of what we're looking at, a shadow rising in the east.
Yeah, they usually do.
And how long are we talking about a shadow?
Okay.
And which properties it would hit.
Right, right.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Hazel or Mr. Scott, do you have any other recommendations, listening to the comments of the public or things that you would need that would help the board making our decision? Mr. Hazel?
Yeah. Not that I, that hasn't been mentioned as yet.
Okay.
Same here. I, I, I think the members of the board have kind of covered all of the, uh, additional, uh, requests for information.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I know Mr. Stack made a good point about the slope of the parking lot, but it's an existing parking lot, so if people are opening up their car doors back when it was occupied, they either bumped into their neighbor or they had a tough time opening it up. So I, I, maybe you can look clarification on that. Is there a maximum slope? Should it only be an eight percent driveway, but it's ten percent parking, I'm sorry, parking lot? Is there any, any, I don't know, are there any issues going with that? They go with that?
Okay, so we'll ask that as a question. Do any other members of the board have any questions that, uh, they feel should be answered? Do any other members of the board have any questions that, uh, they feel should be answered? Seeing none. Again, uh, Mr. Zebrow. What is the mind of the applicant? And if you need a couple of minutes, we'll give you a couple of minutes.
Yeah. If you can just give me two minutes, I can, uh,
Oh, right ahead. Absolutely. So what we're going to do now is take a three minute recess while Mr. Zebrow, uh, bio break. Speaks to the applicant, they'll come back with an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ten oh five. Okay, guys, let's get back on the record. Please.
All right, um, I think we're, we're going to hold off. We'll get you the, that additional information, um.
Okay. And I would have the plans for the fire subcode official who I, I think is going to be one of the operative things to look at to help you out and see what, what that's going to do if you need to put an elevator in the building.
Good, very good.
Okay. And so Ms. McGovern, uh, July meeting. Ms. McGovern, you're, you're muted. All right.
Uh, okay, Gemma, I can confirm this, but I think we have already dedicated our June fourth regular meeting to the West Essex Highlands application. So it would have to go to the next regular meeting in July, which I believe is July second, the first Wednesday. Is that correct, Gemma?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So that would be July second.
Mrs. Zebrow, is that good for you guys?
Um, I'm supposed to be on vacation that week, um, but I can, I can make it work.
Well, it is, it is on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Okay.
You might hear kids and, uh, and dogs in the background, but I'll be here.
Not a problem. And will you send a letter to Ms. McGovern that, that you're agreeing to carry the application, please?
Yes, of course.
Uh, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I'm not available on the second. Make sure you have a quorum and get enough votes, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Any other members of the planning board have a problem with, uh, July second? Raise your hand, please.
Hmm. I'm also on vacation, but I, that I've done that before. And the fact that it's on Zoom, we can make it work.
Hey, appreciate that. Okay.
And there's, there's no other June meetings that we could potentially get on?
Uh, if you want a special meeting, uh, no, June, no, not in June.
No, because we also promised West Essex Highlands, we'll try to work with them to get a special, another special meeting. So but for sure, the reg, regular meeting is dedicated to West Essex Highlands. Uh, um, and so I think there's other things coming up that we're also going to have to have another meeting on a planning board meeting, um, from what I understand. In addition to West Essex Highlands, but we'll see how that comes out.
Okay. So are we agreed, Mr. Zebrow?
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, I just want you to know, this is an option that's available so that the planning board, uh, the township works with the applicant and the objectors to hear comments, make sure that everybody's heard and the application is the best possible application that's finally presented before the planning board. Our goal always is to do the best for the township and the applicant. So to that end, this application will be carried to the July second, twenty twenty five, regular planning board meeting. No additional notice will be required. That meeting will be via Zoom at seven thirty PM. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next application before us is PB twenty five dash O two, Orange Prospect LLC, block one fifty one lot seventeen dot O one zone B two, one, one, one Prospect Avenue. The applicant, Orange Prospect LLC proposes the reconstruction of the existing driveway, walkway path and valet parking area, as well as renovations to the main building at existing restaurant and banquet facility, also known as the manor for the applicant, Mr. McPherson.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Kenneth McPherson of the law firm Gibbons PC, One Gateway Center, Newark, New Jersey. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, Orange Prospect LLC, as Mr. Chairman just summarized, uh, the proposal of the reconstruction of the driveway, walking path and valet parking area, uh, renovations to the main building, uh, at the existing restaurant, uh, banquet facility, uh, construction of a portico tree and, and a community garden are also proposed. Uh, the existing and proposed, uh, restaurant banquet facility is permitted in the B two district. Uh, however, uh, uh, we are seeking a variance, a minor variance this evening uh, for slight impervious coverage exceedance. Uh, applicant is also seeking preliminary and final site plan approval uh, this evening as part of the site plan process. Uh, the applicant did submit a tree removal and replacement plan, uh, to the township forester for his approval uh, pursuant to the ordinance. Uh, proof of compliant public notice was provided to the board secretary establishing that adequate notice was provided. And the West Orange Chronicle, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and certified mail notice was provided to all property owners entitled to such notice. Uh, the applicant and its professionals met, uh, virtually with members of the site plan review advisory board and other township, uh, officials on April eighth, twenty twenty five uh, to conduct the initial informal review. Uh, we thank them for that opportunity, which was well utilized. Uh, the applicant, uh, tonight will present one witness for this application uh, who's familiar to the board, Mr. J. Michael Petrie, uh, who prepared the submitted architectural and engineering plans, uh, to provide detailed testimony as the project's, uh, duly licensed architect, engineer and professional planner. Uh, before bringing up Mr. Petrie to be sworn, I just wanted to mention uh, how pleased, uh, the applicant is to present this application tonight and, and how they look forward to swiftly, uh, refurbishing this historic site. They're ma, maintaining the same type of use at the property that has been there since New Year's Eve in nineteen fifty six. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, the manor and the bow and arrow manor had, uh, some famous visitors, uh, including George Burns, Ronald Reagan and Stevie Wonder, to name a few. Uh, the principals of the applicant have extensive experience in dining and catering. And they currently operate the Royal Manor in Garfield and the Bethwood Grand in Totowa. Uh, they treasure the opportunity to, to provide these same services to the West Orange community at this property uh, with the same attention to detail and service that the Knowles family provided at the manor um, until it closed its doors, uh, on, in July of twenty twenty three. Uh, in the interest of time, I won't go into it. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Mr. Uh, Joseph Fagan, the township historian who at our request did provide some historical records, uh, regarding the manor's operation uh, at the site of the property, uh, and the Knowles family legacy. Uh, if possible, I'd like to submit a, uh, brief memorandum and attachments to the board secretary after tonight's meeting uh, for the benefit of the public, so it could be made part of the record.
So ordered.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my, the introduction. I'd like to uh, bring up now the one witness I mentioned, uh, Mr. Petrie.
Right ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Petrie, uh, it, go ahead, Diane, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Peter, I'm trying to find you on the screen.
I'm here.
Your right hand, got it. Um, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Mr. McPherson.
If you could, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petrie, uh, J. Michael Petrie is well known to the planning board. He has worked in the township of West Orange for many years with our projects and as, uh, a planner, engineer and architect. And as long as he states for the record that his licenses are, uh, up to date in the state of New Jersey, unless somebody has a question, we accept Mr. Petrie as an expert in those three fields.
Mr. Chairman, I'll state for the record that all three of my licenses are current in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. And Mr. Peter, before you begin, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make the request that Mr. Petrie uh, be allowed to make his, uh, testimony in engineering, uh, architectural and, and planning and before the, uh, any questions can be asked of him. I think that'd be the, the, uh, best way to go forward here.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Thank you. And Mr. Peter, one more thing before you begin. Uh, can you confirm, uh, that you have received and reviewed uh, the following reports from the town? Uh, April nine, twenty twenty five, uh, March twentieth, twenty twenty five, the Nishwain Group Board Planner Reports. The March twen, thank you, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, Matrix New World Board Engineer Report.
Yes.
And the May fifth, twenty twenty five pedestrian safety advisory board recommendation memorandum.
Yes, I got that one and read it while I was sitting, waiting for a plane to come back to Newark yesterday.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Peter. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I've, uh, I've started sharing my screen. I trust that you can see what's, what's there. This is information that's contained on our title sheet. We kind of combined two documents into one. Um, just so, so that I could make it easier for everybody. Uh, the subject property is designated as lot seventeen O one and block one fifty one. It's more commonly known as one eleven Prospect Avenue in West Orange. The property, as indicated by Mr. McPherson, is historically operated as the manor, a restaurant and catering facility uh, well known throughout the world. Uh, parcel includes a total of eight point three acres with a hundred, uh, thousand seventy feet of frontage on Prospect Avenue and a hundred and sixty six feet of frontage along Woodland Avenue. It's zoned P B two and the properties immediately behind it are zoned R six. Um, it's important to note that the Residence Inn Hotel located immediately next door uh, to the property to the north contains a hundred and twenty four uh, parking space easement for the exclusive use of the restaurant and catering facility. As such, all of our notices have included that property. Uh, in terms of, uh, historical approvals, and I'm just going to move to the existing conditions plan, which is sheet SB two in your, in your package. Um, I've been fortunate enough to been, to have been working for the Knowles family on this and other properties since nineteen eighty five. During that time, I've prepared all of the site plans for both the restaurant and catering facility, as well as the hotel. I was part of the nineteen ninety three application approved by the board that split this into two separate sites, one for the uh, manor and the other for the hotel. Um, when the two phased renovation was planned and ultimately completed, I was instrumental in developing both the concepts and the final plans. And ultimately, working with Harry Knowles, his two sons and his two grandchildren on the build out of those improvements. The first phase was approved by the TRC in two thousand twelve. And the last board approval was in two thousand thirteen. That included the rooftop addition. Um, and a phase that has not been implemented yet, which was the conversion of the carriage house to a bar for à la carte dining. All of the more current approvals reference the nineteen ninety six planning board approval, which limits the occupancy of the restaurant and banquet facility to fourteen hundred and four people with a total of four hundred and thirty four parking spaces, of which a hundred and twenty four are part of that easement that I mentioned earlier. Sorry. The proposal that's before you this evening, uh, makes some minor architectural changes to the building. Uh, for those of you who are familiar with the building, there is no portico share. Now, the portico share is that roof area that you can drive under to get out of your car without getting wet. Um, it's been one of my, um, complaints about the building for a number of years, but, but it's been a difficult problem to solve. Uh, we've incorporated here by changing, uh, changing both the driveway and the fountain that's out front, eliminating that so that we could have an, the ability to, to create this area. Uh, the second change to the building is the area that faces the fountains in the garden in the front. And that area currently has, if you look at the upper part of the screen, it currently has, um, greenhouse style curved glass, uh, facade there. And what we're going to do is we're going to take that out and we're going to put in, um, new doors and glass that, that will exit onto that same patio and, and, uh, and fountain area. So there are no real true additions here, although the, you know, the, uh, the portico share counts as an addition per se, um, but it, it's simply a portico share and a windbreak at the existing columns. So it's, it's not enclosed building. From a site perspective, we're doing several important things and I'm going to start with what's labeled as SP three in your set. Um, and this is the, um, this is the overall site plan. One of the most important things that we're doing, in my opinion, is, is reconfiguring the exit driveway. Um, this is something that's been, uh, on my list of to do for as long as I've been working here. Uh, the existing driveway, for those of you who have exited that driveway, it's very steep as it reaches Prospect Avenue and it's very difficult to see. What we're doing is we're pushing the driveway about twenty five feet to the north at its exit point. So we can straighten it out, take out the curve, move it away from the garden walls and fill the upper reach of that driveway in. We can't do it where it is today because that would put pressure on the walls that they can't take. So instead we move it to the north. We, we regrade that driveway and we improve the, uh, the ability for, um, exiting vehicles to see. For those of you who have gone in and out of the driveway that serves. For those of you who have gone in and out of the driveway that services the hotel, that's exactly, we're following the exact same grading pattern as we did there. And it will result in a driver's eye that's closer to the elevation of Prospect Avenue, which is gonna create a safer exiting movement. I, I've been to this facility more times than I can count, both as a patron and for meetings, and I can tell you that exiting that driveway is still one of the scariest driveways that I get to use on a regular basis. When you look at the, at the impact as we move that slightly northerly, we, we also chose to reconfigure this front parking lot. The front parking lot is probably the most important lot in, in the facility because on a day-to-day basis, this is the parking that everybody uses. So if you're coming to plan an event, if you're coming for meetings at the facility, if you're coming for a small get together at the facility, this front parking lot will be the parking lot that everybody uses. On on evenings when the facility is booked for larger events, that's when they'll have valet parking, and the valet will take over this lot. But for the ADA parking, again, we're on the side of a hill, so this is, ADA is important because it, it needs, it needs a what's called an accessible route, so you have to be able to get from the cars to the front doors. We've developed a half a dozen ADA spaces with a direct accessible route to the path that gets you to the front door of this facility, and they are the closest spaces to it. We've also done two things that, that I think are, are pretty cool. First of all, we've increased the parking on the property by this reconfiguration. But we've simultaneously decreased the impervious coverage on this property by about five thousand square feet. So we've, we've not only added ADA parking spaces with a defined accessible route, we've added E V parking spaces, a half a dozen of those as well, and we've brought the total parking on site to four hundred and seventy one spaces when you consider our E V credits. And as I mentioned, we've done this while simultaneously reducing impervious coverage by five thousand square feet. A quick look at the grading and how we accomplished this with the driveway. This is sheet S P six point one in your set. We've regraded the driveway to provide an area that's relatively flat, less than five percent for the first twenty five feet of the, of the driveway. That driveway gets, you know, a little steeper going down, but now it's gonna be a constant grade. We've added drainage improvements on that driveway, and we've reconfigured this whole parking lot and incorporated drainage improvements there, too. So ultimately, we've connected this, this storm sewer system through parking lot C to the existing, to the existing drainage facility that's there. And what's important to note about this is this is an improvement that can only be made while the facility is closed, and that's what we've worked through. So this whole front parking lot can be done now while the facility is closed. It can't be done while this is open because this driveway is gonna take weeks to do. We've taken the time to develop new lighting for this front parking lot as well, so all of the driveways and the driveways and the parking area will be lit by fifteen foot light poles. These are lantern-type fixtures that are dark sky compliant, so they're, they don't have glare that goes up in the air. The walkways, the pedestrian areas, and the, and the plaza area outside of the fountain are lit with twelve foot high light poles. And that front area is, is something that's important to the application as well. If I just go in, this is the area that, that you come out of, you know, out of that existing room in the front of the building with the glass that overlooks the fountains, and you walk downstairs today to get out. There's about five, five risers to get down to the patio level. Our intention is to fill that area in and to raise that up so that, that this, this area outside can be, can be ADA accessible and enjoyed by all patrons, not just those who are physically capable of walking downstairs. That's gonna cause us to have to, to reconstruct this front fountain and raise this up a bit to, so that, so that it's above the patio area, but that's included in the plans as well. Basically, we're bringing in a little over three feet of fill in this area to raise this up. And again, all new drainage through this area that connects out to that parking lot drainage. And then finally, we have our tree replacement plan. And this is T R two in the set that was submitted. The, as part of the previous submittals made to the township, we're seeking the board's approval of our landscape plan, which includes some tree work that's already been completed as well as tree work that will be finalized as the front parking lot is completed. So the the plan, portion of the plan that's been completed is outlined here in red. Areas A, B, and C along the driveways. The trees there have been planted and, and are being maintained. Actually, some of them needed to be replaced. There was, there was some tree removal performed before a permit was sought. Basically, they were, they were attempting to replace in kind. They weren't aware of the ordinance. They and they have gone through the process through the courts, and there's, there's a settlement in place. And what that settlement requires is ultimately the board's approval. The additional areas, again, as we install the, the parking in the front in that lot, we, we've implemented additional evergreens at that location. We've, we will complete the evergreens along the exit driveway with, mixed in with the red maples, and then we have red maples and evergreens that will be placed along the front. The final piece of the puzzle in this, in this application is, is a community garden, and that's, that's located right behind and adjacent to the, the Carriage House that's on the property. Carriage House currently has a greenhouse, and what we're planning on doing is developing this, this garden for, that will be overseen by the chef and his staff, likely a gardener, and it will be developed to service the restaurant and banquet use, but will also be available for community groups for them to, on a first come, first served basis, for them to utilize this, this garden and not only that, but learn from this garden. I was fortunate enough on my recent trip to, to visit the, a very similar facility at the J W Marriott in Orlando. Absolutely fascinating what they're doing there and growing so many of the things that they're using in their, in their restaurants. The, there are several non-conformities that are not being affected by this application. They include setback violations on the south side of the existing building, accessory use setbacks for the pavement in that area as well, accessory use front setback for the, for the parking that, that is within the employee parking lot, accessory use side setback for the parking lot as it abuts the hotel parking lot. We're required to have a separation there. And the buffer to the residential zone, again, on the south side of the building and the portion of the employee parking lot that's closest to the, the building. Finally, while we have improved the impervious coverage, we're still at sixty point five three percent, or sixty is permitted. We call this out as a variance because we are over, but as I indicated, we are, we are making this better by five, about five thousand square feet. We're reducing the coverage from the existing condition, which is sixty, I'm sorry, I'm just stealing a peek at the plan, sixty one point seven five. We're dropping it to sixty point five three. We're, we're over by about nineteen hundred square feet. And, and I've promised everybody that I will work on that when we do Lot C. My hope, my hope will be to get closer. Yeah. So we call this out as a, as a variance despite the fact that it's an existing non-conformity. But in my opinion, there's a direct public benefit. Obviously, we, we are adding five thousand square feet of green space, and we are simultaneously reducing stormwater runoff. That's a direct benefit to the public. I don't see a substantial detriment associated this, with this granting of the variance because, in essence, we will be improving the condition, and therefore I believe that it meets the C two criteria. Finally, while we are increasing the previously approved parking, which was four hundred and thirty four spaces to a total of four hundred and seventy one spaces when, when we include our E V credits, we would like to request that the board consider increasing that occupancy by a hundred and eleven people, and a hundred and eleven is based upon the difference between four seventy one and four thirty four. So that's the approved, the previously approved parking and the current proposal for parking. And that difference is thirty seven parking spaces. Your ordinance requires one space for every three seats. So if we multiplied that by three, we'd have, we'd be, have an increase of a hundred and eleven for a total of fifteen hundred and fifteen, should the board grant that. I think it's a reasonable request, given, given what we're doing and where we're going with the, with the parking increase. So that's really what we're here looking for this evening. I can, I can answer questions and go into any further detail that you might need.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Just very quickly, if, if you could just jump into the address in the memorandum from the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Yes. So the they, the advisory committee asked us to look at implementing a sidewalk along Prospect Avenue. Historically, that has been tricky at the fountain, and it's been tricky at the employee parking lot. They, they raised a, they raised a good point, and that is that we have a reservation that, you know, that perhaps we could incorporate the, the sidewalk within the employee parking lot on the tree side of that of that lot. And, and I looked at it, and I think we can do, do that because we have a fairly wide drive aisle. We, we do get to a pinch point in front of the fountains because those fountains are up to the, up to the property line. The walls actually go over a bit, and, and there are evergreens there, so we would have to do something relatively creative at this location in order to accommodate that.
The county would have to be involved in that.
Yeah, the county, the county would, well, the county, the county generally accepts sidewalks if the municipality requires it, and I mean, we can get there. You know, I, I just, I, my concern is, my concern is what happens right here in front of these fountains because we, we do have, you know, we do have drop off and we do have evergreens. If we eliminate the evergreens, can we work something in here and here to, to replace them? Yes. I think we can try to work with this committee to get that sidewalk in. It doesn't connect to much of anything.
Yeah, as far as sidewalk connection on that street, Mr. Petrie, are, are you aware of how much sidewalk connectivity there is? I know part of the idea is to make more connectivity, but just from your observation.
Well, again, to the, to the north of us is the hotel. There's, there's not sidewalks along that frontage, and to the north of that is the Montclair Golf Club, and there's no sidewalks along that frontage. There are sidewalks on Woodland Avenue, and I believe that there, there are sidewalks in front of the residential development there up to a point. Our project at West Orange Plaza, the hopefully soon to be Target Shopping Center, is has sidewalks incorporated there that come down and connect to those residential sidewalks. So if we were to be able to get it along the frontage of this property, you could walk from, basically from the hotel to, to the shopping center if, if one were staying there long term. So I understand their desire to do this. I think some of the improvements that have been made recently on Prospect Avenue might, might help us do that. So the the remaining comments seem to talk about parking and, and you know, and discussing, you know, access to the building from the parking lots and, and what's better to have is, is self-parking, what's better to have is valet. And this, this property has always had self-parking signed literally at, just before you get to this driveway, and it's, there's, it says self-parking to the right, valet parking straight. I would add to that, you know, accessible parking straight to the valet straight because you, you need to be able to get to these spaces. The, but I think having self-parking in this area, and there's the sidewalk that connects up to the hotel site here because I designed it. This, this area, this area, this area is all parking that's, that's available for, you know, for use by this facility. So I think that's, that's not an unreasonable ask, and it's got a pedestrian route there. The majority of people who want a facility like this are going to use, are, are going to use valet. We're seeing more and more and more, you know, opportunities showing, you know, people using Uber and Lyft and, and things such as that. So I think you're gonna see a lot more drop off. And you know, I think, I think that's inevitable because I think that's, I think that's where society is going at this point. So, you know, I, I appreciate the comments that, that the self-parking would be better, you know, would be closer to the door and easier for people if it's in Lot C. It's, you know, at this facility, it's never been that way, but for the day-to-day operations, the Monday, you know, the Monday to, to Friday operations during the day, this is gonna be the only parking lot used other than the employee parking lot, so.
Right, and if most people for this type of use now, to your understanding, Mr. Petrie, do valet, obviously, people would want their car when they're leaving to be ideally in the nearest lot so that it can be, it can be gotten to them sooner.
Well, look, when you're, when you're dealing with, when you're dealing with valet at a facility like this at the end of the night, yes, people want their car quickly, and, and the quickest way is, is for the valets to have the shortest run, you know, the shortest run. The longer, the longer to run, the longer it's gonna take to get your car, and that's not what people want or expect. So, you know, do, will, will they use it in the, you know, the longest runs, you know, in the busiest parties? Yes, guaranteed, but they'll probably also have bigger staff at those parties.
Right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Petrie. Mr. Chairman, no, I have no further questions for Mr. Petrie at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie, for your presentation, and you're exactly right. The, the goal of the planning board would be with the Pedestrian Safety Committee to have a sidewalk go from the hotel all the way down to the Target Shopping Center. That would make the most sense. It'll also provide greater safety for your employees walking along Prospect Avenue, especially in the evening. There's a well delineated sidewalk for them to walk on. Having said that, again, thank you for your presentation, and we'll have questions from the board. Vice Chairman Guerina, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
Um, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a comment if I can. It's not actually a question, it's just an observation to Mr. Petrie and the applicant. Thank you for seriously taking into consideration the requirements of the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, particularly because our master plan is incorporated with complete streets and green streets and all greenscape. So what we try to do in the county has been very supportive, and we want to put sidewalks in along their properties and right of ways, is to make West Orange walkable. And what you're doing is, can what we got accomplished with Target and the Shopping Plaza and Target coming all the way down to when you do your project, and we did get Montclair Country Club to do some sidewalks, but coming all the way down to when you do your project and we did get Montclair Country Club to do some sidewalks, but doing what you're doing with pedestrian safety is going to make your facility more attractive to the community, walkable to the community. And believe it or not, people may, if whatever your facility is open for walk-in dining or free creamer dining, people will walk to your facility. So just my observation, I just want to thank you on behalf of the board. You know, for taking the seriousness in um, to this, I know pedestrian, pedestrian safety. Can, can I make a comment about um, the um landscaping or is that for another time?
Not now, not now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney. Do you have any questions, Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
No, not a, not a question, more a comment. Also, uh, Mike, I want to say thank you um, for the investment uh, that we're seeing here in town. When I first got elected, I met with the Knowles family when they had decided that they were going to close up shop. There were actually tears from some of the members of the board because they were proposing a hotel at that time. And the only thing that they were going to be able to preserve from the building was the dome. Um, and you know, they just, they couldn't do it. So I'm pleased to see um, the work that's being done here. Um, I do appreciate the fact that you acknowledge the tree removal and replacement plan. I appreciate that. Um, we do have a core group of master gardeners, Essex County Master Gardeners, if they do want to help the chef with that community garden. Uh, and I do understand that at Pleasant Dale Chateau, they do the same thing, garden to table. I think there's thirty-three acres up there. They have a tenant farmer that prepares the vegetables for the restaurant. Um.
Yes, and they were always used at this facility as well.
Right, yep. And I appreciate the consideration for uh, for the sidewalks to meet up with the West Orange Plaza.
That's our goal.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony? Cas and personal, councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
Yes, real, just real quickly. Um, I want to thank you again for the investment. We're also thrilled to see all the work that's being done here. I just want to make sure, I'm sure you know, we have a new stormwater management ordinance. I'm sure everything that you're doing is com- in compliance with that and I'm glad that you're.
Yeah, you want I'm muted again? Okay.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Um, you said you're doing various drainage improvements in the parking lot. Could you just briefly talk about what those are?
Certainly. Um, historically, the, the drainage for this parking lot has run into the area immediately outside the door. It's, it's been difficult because, you know, as it ponds at the door, it risks going into the building. We literally designed the building to, to raise the floor a little bit and then drop it back down inside so that that wouldn't happen. But what we're doing is we can reconfigure this driveway and, and rebuild this area. Um, w- we've actually directed the drainage to a low spot that's between the, the main building and the carriage house. So that in the event that, that there's ponding, it literally, it can literally go over the curb and through into the garden area directly. Um, all of the, all of the improvements that we're showing here, um, incorporate additional collection systems. A lot of the pipes, we, we had, the owner has had all of the stormed lines scoped and cleaned and scoped so that we could see where our problems are. And we're doing upgrades to that system so that, so that this can be taken care of. We want to, we want to do all of this work in front of this building one time and get this open so that we can, we can know that it's done and it's good for the next fifty years. We're sad, I think, seventy, seventy.
Yeah, I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
We're, we're excited about it. I mean, we're, we're, we're putting a lot of money into it and we're, we're very excited. I, I know that my client is, is extremely excited about this project.
Right. I can't wait to see the garden.
Mr. Alper, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
I do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkes. Do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
No, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Al, Mr. Klein. Do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
Yeah, so are we going to see a revised plan with the sidewalk across the frontage?
Um, we can certainly incorporate that and, and submit it to whoever it needs to go to. I mean, we'll, we're going to have to do some work to do that, but um, you know, I this was, this was May fifth, today's May seventh. I Lee, I'll be honest with you, I didn't do it today.
Oh, no, no, uh, no, it's fine. No, I, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that's either going to be a condition of approval or you're going to get.
I, I would, look, I would absolutely accept this memorandum, you know, that point of this, that specific point of this memorandum is a condition of approval. I know there, I know there's going to be some conditions from both the engineering and planning reports. Um, they, they both had some really good comments and, and we've actually started addressing those comments already uh, since the T R C meeting. But what I didn't want to do is drop new plans uh, you know, in the planning department's lap ten days before the meeting because I didn't think that was fair.
Let me talk a little bit about first of all, is it an option for it to be a hundred percent valet for an event? Or do you always have to have the option of people to self park?
I think, I think you always have to give people the option to self park. There are people who are very
That's fine, no, that's fine. And so my, like, follow up to that is, can you talk a little bit about the interaction between pedestrians that are going to have to now scoot through the park, parking lot? And if there is overflow valet and the valets are driving in and out, it just seems like, uh, whatever, I, we're, how you allocate it is one thing, but can you talk a little bit about how somebody that's going to park, what is it again? That's lot D or C, the one at the, 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 the one that's at the top? That's D?
Sorry, I have the letters. This is the landscape.
So if I'm parking in the self parking lot C, I'm, I'm interacting with now somebody who's dropped off their car and the valet guy is on his, in a rush to get to get the car parked and vice versa. So I'm just a little concerned with the pedestrian safety. Is there a, a better way to get the pedestrians from the building to their parking lot?
I'm sorry to talk. Uh, for me, the, the best parking spaces are, are in here for, for self parking. Because there's a walkway here that, that brings you right down. There's a, there's a designated crosswalk. Um, and, and it brings you right to the front door. So, you know, I, I would, I would not anticipate a ton of people self parking, but I would think that, you know, the spaces that are literally right here and, you know, right at the edge of the hotel site here, those are spaces that could easily, in fact, just let me go back one more. This is the overall site. Nope, sorry. It didn't help me. Um, yeah, there's the overflow parking, the hundred and twenty-four spaces is in here and the next line up. So I think a lot of these spaces make the most sense for self parkers. And, and look, you've also got to anticipate that, you know, when we, when we did the hotel, you know, we said you're going to have crossover traffic. There's going to be people who are parking at the hotel to come to the, you know, because they're staying at the hotel to come to a facility because they don't want to drive home when it's over. Um, so that's why this whole walkway system was put in from the, from the beginning. So it, it makes sense to have the self parking along, along paralleling that walkway and we can find it that way if you want us to.
So they can, they can walk from the parking space right directly to the walkway or they have to either walk in the drive aisle and then get into the crosswalk? I, I have to see what it looks like.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's actually access.
Say you parked in the middle of that row, how would you get to the, to the building?
Um, you would either, you would either cut through.
You can't cut, okay, that's, yeah.
The, the walk, the walkways here, so it actually goes all the way up to the hotel, but.
Right.
Um.
But it seems like you gotta walk to the crosswalk to get into the beginning of it and that's where you're crossing to get to the building. All right. And then the, the six ADA spots, that's going to be self parked ADA spots.
So those are self parked ADA spaces. They have direct access across and, and to the front door and.
And I think Mr. Scott, if he doesn't go through his, there's a, a comment about how you calculated six.
Yeah, again, we're, we, we looked at it as, as we're touching this lot, we got to make this lot compliant. Um, we, we anticipate coming back to this board and touching this lot. Um, when, when we, when we do the carriage house, ultimately, we love the idea of the carriage house as the, as the bar you know, and they, they were going to connect it in, but we'll, we'll probably look to convert this to the à la carte dining. Um, and when we do that, we're going to need, we're going to need to redo this parking lot. We're going to have ADA parking for that. We're going to have ADA parking to get to the garden, the public garden, because we're going to have to do that. So when we touch this lot, we anticipate doing more ADA and more um, and more uh, E V parking spaces as well.
So you're going to be able to work on lot C while the catering facility is up and running?
Yes, because we'll be able to, this isn't going to change, this drive aisle isn't going to change. It can still get us all back to here to the hotel parking. And this lot won't end up being overly, over, overly difficult to do. We're going to have to pick and choose, obviously, but we can pick and choose um, before, before we open this. And obviously, that means we have to come back to the board to do that. We know that.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. And Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony? Mr. Cardozo, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie and his testimony?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Mr. Petrie for your presentation and Mr. McPherson for your lead in. Um, I have some questions regarding the parking lots.
Okay.
Uh, just to clarify, Mr. Petrie, the striping all throughout, this, these are this is all new la- layouts throughout the, the lots or?
The, the only lot that's new, uh, Mr. Cardozo, is this lot in the front. That's a completely different configuration what's there today. Everything else is what's, is what you're looking at today.
Oh, wow. Okay, because I'm looking at um, lot A and so lot A is the employee parking, correct?
It is correct.
Okay, and the turn, turning into I believe we can, we can make off a prospect both a left hand and a right hand turn into this lot?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and the there's no issue with the little kind of island of, uh, what is this? One, two, three, is that six space, seven spaces?
These spaces here?
Yes, not.
This, this is, there's an existing drive aisle here that's twenty-four feet wide. And there's an, and there's, there's space here to exit as well. So that's not, that's not an issue.
Okay. The the, the little lane that, um, going up from that drive aisle, is that where does that lead to? Is that, is that for traffic?
This is, this is actually, this, there's actually an easement across the back of these properties because there's, there's actually driveway that goes back. It's a service driveway. Um, and that's why both of these homes were included in the, these were both owned by members of the Knowles family. I think uh, in the end, Carrie owned both of these. Carrie's, Harry's granddaughter. And, and so they created an easement across the back of them. I think I think the owner even bought one of them. I'm not positive of that. But that's, yeah, the, there's a driveway that's historically encroached on those properties and that's why they bought them. So.
This driveway, is that, is that the current or, or planned main source of deliveries or?
It, yes, it will remain the, the, the approach for deliveries. Yes.
Okay. Um, for the main where, where to say, made the main drive, main driveway here, the, the island in the center, is that new, the green island in this?
This?
Yeah.
Uh, right now, there's a, there's a circular fountain there. Um, we're taking the fountain, we're taking that, we're taking that fountain out and we're putting, we're putting a new fountain in here. But yes, that, that island is there to create a landing spot for our portico share because this is the outline of the portico share. I'm tracing it here. So the cars can pull under and we can have a series of probably s- six or seven cars underneath the portico share unloading um, at a time.
Have you done the turning angles for large vehicles, emergency vehicles?
Yes, we, we actually have a turning plan included in our set that, that has the fire truck coming through this area and out. It's kind of why there, there's some um, you know, uh, large, at, large radii through here so that we can get the, the fire truck through there.
Sure, if we can, I want to take a look at that. Thank you. Um, can you? So I, I think I've heard two different things. Maybe you can s- square the circle for me on the carriage house. Did you, I heard bar ends à la carte dining and then I heard one or the other?
Okay, so in two thousand thirteen, the request was made to, to create a drop off lane right here and to convert this into a bar. It was going to be the phase that was done after the roof, uh, the roof go, um, enclosure. Ah, the roof building enclosure. It was here. It was part of that same two thousand thirteen site plan. It's never been done. So the intention in, in this owner's intention is to look at this uh, to, to perhaps do the à la carte dining in this building rather than in the main building. So that you can keep the, you can keep it separate and you don't have to, you know, on a, on a Tuesday night, you don't have to open up this big building for dinner. You can have it in here.
Does it already have an existing kitchen separate from the main building?
It doesn't. Um, and the original intention was to create a connection. I don't know that that's something that's planned. I think they would, they would operate this in its own, in its own kitchen. If they were to do that.
Okay, the and I, I just want to clarify the dif- the distinction between the greenhouse and the garden here. If you could, you know, move the mouse to the cursor and explain what's what.
So this is the existing greenhouse. It's actually attached to this accessory building.
Okay.
So this is, this carriage house has a greenhouse. It's this pink area in here. And basically, there's an existing walk. Actually, it has stairs that we're taking out that goes back to the ceremony area. This is the ceremony area. The pavilion that they have, the ceremonies under, this is the walkway for the brides. Um, and there's, there's a ramp that comes up from the parking lot into here as well for service vehicles. Again, there's a fountain, there's walkways around the fountain that all connect. So our intention was to come off of those walkways at two locations here and here to come into the garden. And do I have the garden? Hold on, give me just let me take a sec so I could blow that up if I can for you.
Sure. You know, before, before you get there, because, because you can end on the garden. Um, quick question about lot A again, when employees park, where do they walk to enter the building?
The, the employees come in the rear of the building. There's an employee entrance back uh, in the rear of the building.
Okay.
To where their locker rooms are.
So they, they walk along that service drive?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering, any, with the service drive, late at night events, I don't know, deliveries, do, what, what's there regarding visibility or signage or?
Well, the, the deliveries are um, they're usually done off hours, but employees are there for the delivery. So probably vehicles in this lot in terms of access. This is um.
Is it, is there lighting by that door or anything?
There's building mounted lighting here, yes, that lights up this, this whole area. Um.
Gotcha. All right, yeah, no. So yeah, uh, the garden. So um, I know you were going to pull up a little bit more about the garden. If you could just explain the intense here, because I, I heard public gardens, which made me think you know, individual visitors during certain hours that would be, it would operate kind of as a separate um, accessory use or, and then I heard for public groups, making me think specifically you would have you know, tell groups to come in and, and get a plot or something. I, I don't know. You, you mentioned that you saw another facility operate. I, I just, if.
Yeah, okay, hold, I just need to, 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 I need to stop my share because I need to open up a different file to get that out. So give me
Sure.
half a second and I'll see what I can do here. This, close that. I need to open this. Here. That. Share that. It only took five years, but I'm getting better at this now.
All things in due time.
You can teach an old dog new tricks. Okay, so again, this is, there are walkways that come across the front of the building now. We're going to be replacing those walkways. As I said, this is the walkway that comes in. There's stairs in it today that we're taking out. Um, and I'm creating an entrance into the garden here off of this existing path and here off of this existing path. So inside the So inside the garden will be a fenced-in area. Um, that, that fence attaches back to the building, it will center on the greenhouse, and then there's going to be um. These. I guess these are like, they're like. Plant or, planter bins that will be located along the perimeters. And then butting up against the building, and they have circulation paths around them, so that's what you're looking at here. So these planter bins will be separated, there'll be um shade-loving herbs. Uh, and vegetables in this area, there'll be sun-loving herbs and vegetables in this area. And then there'll be ground planting beds for some of the bigger, for some of the bigger vegetables that, that are grown there, so. Um. This area, the, these ground planting area here will be likely be used for, by the restaurant and banquet facility only. And then there's going to be a delineation where uh people can, uh, people or groups can sign up and have. Um, either bins designated to them or to their group um. And.
Right, or on an annual basis via application. Uh, Mr. Cardozo, uh, the mayor mentioned some good uh groups who would be interested. Uh, you know, ma- mainly the intent is for community and educational organizations. Uh, to reserve a planning bed, uh, that would be the, the best use, I think, and that's what the, the applicant's. Idea is in order to integrate itself to the community, so.
And they'll obviously have the, the assistance of the, of the staff there, you know, in providing some guidance to them. So I, it'll be educational as well as, um, you know, useful and for some of us medicinal because. We are what we.
Mike, do you have fencing around that? Oh, sorry, John.
Thank you, Mr. Cardozo, and we're gonna go to Ms. Capra.
Yep, well done, thank you both.
Ms. Capra, do you have any questions for Mr. Uh, Petrie on his testimony?
Yes, I do, yes, um, thank you, um, Chairman, and uh, thank you, Mr. Petrie, for your um presentation. Um, also, thank you for uh being willing to provide the sidewalk along Prospect Avenue. I think as others have shared that that will be um an improvement that's appreciated. Uh, by residents and, and others who are, are staying in the area. Um, one question regarding the um, the accessible route and the ADA spots. Um, can you share how you calculated the number of spaces um? The, the handicap spaces?
Yes, we did it based solely on the um. On the parking spaces in that lot B that we're touching.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering, yeah, do you have enough ADA spots then for the, the site?
The, the answer is um, we, we're. When we're finished, we'll have more than there are today. Um, so we'll, we'll be improving and making that lot, that lot that we're touching compliant. Um, and as we touch lot C, we're going to uh be able to do the same thing. Um, so we, we don't have handicap parking spaces in the visitor lot. Um. Because quite frankly, there's not an accessible route from any of those spaces to the employee entrance.
And then um, so you said, so a- as you touch other lots, you will be providing additional. Handicap parking, is that, is that right?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm back to sharing this overall plan cuz I think it's the most important one to talk from. When we, when we touch lot C. Um, we'll, we'll, I expect that we'll be providing ADA parking for the use that is here. Whatever that use may be, if it's bar or if it's restaurant, bar and restaurant, and we'll be providing ADA spaces to access. The uh, the, the garden for those who are visiting for that purpose. So we expect to do, we expect to do both ADA in both locations uh for those, for those entrances.
And I, I apologize.
As well.
Okay, yeah, great, uh, yeah, cuz that was actually one of my other questions was how, how you were calculating EV spaces. But I imagine it was, it's a similar concept that you're kind of doing it by lot.
Yes.
As you improve, and um, can you share again, you know, when, if you have a timeframe for lot C?
Um, I. I would have loved to have brought the whole thing to the board at one time. Um, but from a practical perspective, we didn't have time to design this building and design this parking lot. You know, in a reasonable timeframe to get this open, I mean, we're. We're hemorrhaging money. You know, we bought the place and, and we can't function as it is. So we, we need, we need to get this open, and that's why we're doing this piece first, and this, the, the interiors first.
Okay. Um, and one more question is uh about drainage. Um. It sounded like, based on what you shared before, that generally drainage patterns are remaining the same as what they are currently. Um, you just wanna confirm that um, you know, drainage, I guess particularly to the west, that, that it's not increasing at any point. I mean, even, you know, thinking about that overflow that you, you mentioned, um. You know, understanding that those properties sit kind of down gradient, there, there won't be additional. Um, like points where source discharges or anything like that.
Yeah, well, okay, so a couple of things, um, the, as I indicated. We're decreasing impervious by five thousand square feet, so we're going to be reducing the overall volume of water that runs off of this site. Um, you know, we are putting in new collection systems because some of those older pipes. You know, over the years have just failed from, from whether it's, you know, lack of maintenance or just old age. Um. I think um, I'll, I'll mention Mr. Scott's letter, and he made some pretty good comments. He said, you know, I understand that this is ultimately tributary to a system that's on the. Um, that's on the hotel property and then goes through an easement down to Deerfield. But, you know, he believes that the maintenance of that system. Needs to be incorporated into our maintenance manual, and I didn't think of that, and that's a really good comment. Because ultimately, the swell that carries all of this, that carries the drainage from the back of the site. Connects to the system, and this, this piping system. Ultimately, including the detention system from the hotel, goes back through that same system and out to Deerfield. And, and he asked us, first of all, to confirm that the, that the, that the system going out to Deerfield had capacity. To handle the, the storm, and we checked that and it does. Um, and he said that we should incorporate that, the rest of that system into our maintenance manual. And I think that's a really good point, even though it's off our site, we have a responsibility to maintain that, to ensure that. Our site continues to drain properly in conjunction with the hotel site draining properly. So, good.
That, I think that's great, a- and I would agree, yeah, cuz if that's not functioning, then like you said, it, it hurts your property too, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Was, it was a great point, I appreciate the comment.
Mm-hmm. Um, that's all that I have for questions, thank you so much.
Great, councilperson scarf, are you raising your hand again?
Yes, I just had, I wanted to ask Mr. Petrie if he's taken a look at our new stormwater management ordinance. Because we do um deal with maintenance in there.
Yeah, one, the one that you recommended tonight?
Yeah, that, they're not, that, that doesn't apply yet cuz the council hasn't adopted that, a councilperson scarper.
It, it's, I, I haven't looked at it because I don't know, I haven't seen the, the public document for it yet. But, but at the end of the day, even your current ordinance requires that we prepare a stormwater um maintenance plan. And we did that and submitted it, and that's um what I was just commenting on a second ago. Um, because, because in the letter from, from Matrix. Um, the, the recommendation is that we. Expand, Mr. Scott's recommendation is that we expand our maintenance to include. The off-site system all the way down to the public system, and I, I, I didn't think of that, honestly, and I think it's a great comment. And we're going to, we're going to do that in our next middle.
Right, yeah, no, I believe we've passed it, so he might wanna take a look.
Okay, um, I'm not gonna even go there. Uh, do any members, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie on his uh testimony?
Not at the start.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Petrie's testimony?
Uh, not really any questions, just comment, uh, I'd just like to say, Mr. Petrie, thank you for addressing a, a lot of the comments from the board. Some of those questions were ones that I would have had for myself. Um, I know that you did review uh my review letter, and I just want to know, um, you know, as part of the conditions of approval. If the board so chooses to approve, will you um basically provide revised drawings? And uh a letter uh answering each of the points from my uh letter?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I would say that I don't have anything further.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Scott. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Petrie on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any member of the public have any questions for Mr. Petrie on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Joyce Rudin. Please state your name and address for the record. Hi, uh, good evening, everyone, Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. Um, Mr. Petrie, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, you referenced the court settlement in, in regard to the two hundred and fifty trees that were legally taken down.
Ms. Rudin, Ms. Rudin, uh, excuse me, councilperson Rudin. The, any settlement agreement is outside of the purview of the planning board. And as you know, chapter twenty-five does not have trees in it, it's under the purview of the town forester. So everything will be conditioned of the town forester reviewing it, and the planning board ha- has nope, was not participant. In any court settlement, so I wanna, you can ask a question, but I wanna stop that information from getting on our uh, uh, meeting.
Um, how, how do we know what the replanting schedule is and where?
Now, we'll be, again, that's a great question, the, the chat, the replanting schedule is taken out of chapter twenty-five. And it's, it's a purview of the uh town forester, so the applicant will provide the town forester with a replanting schedule. Or town forester will review that, is that correct, Ms. Uh, McGovern?
I, I know that they did submit a, I did get a copy of the um submission that they did already send over to the township forester. So, yes, the township forester governs this. But shouldn't that be available to the public?
It, it's in the set that we submitted.
It's absolutely available to the public.
Uh, can you, can you go back to the, the map, please? The uh parking lot A, the workers' parking lot. Um, a lot of those trees that were replanted are now dead. Um, do you have any plans to address that? Um, additionally, along the, along the um side and closer to the building, all of those plants that were, that were planted. The trees that were planted, they're completely a monoculture. Um, there's no diversity in, in the planting, they are um also dead. Um, and, and additionally, in the back of the parking lot. The many, many trees were cut down or just simply chopped, and the, the logs were left in the back. Along with trash. How will you be dealing with that?
The. The tree removal and replacement plan was, was submitted, not only as part of the. Um, program to the town forester. Um, and it was reviewed, and he actually approved the plant that, we got approval to replant areas. A, B, C, and D, as shown on this plan here. The remaining areas are what still need to be planted uh around this uh parking lot that we're reconstructing. Um, I know that, that we lost a number of trees, and we lost a number of trees. Because quite frankly, it took us quite a bit of time to get the town to review and address. The, the uh submittal that we made. And get them to approve our ability to put the trees in, because the trees were already on the site. Um, we had trees that literally sat on the site for almost. Two months before they were able to be put in the ground. And because of that, because of the stress on those trees, we lost more than you would normally lose. But I can tell you that the, that the replacement trees uh to, to uh. To swap them out with have already been ordered. And we're just waiting for them to arrive because now it's, now it's time that we can plant again.
Okay, on, on the property that, that the manor owns. Around uh going down Woodland Avenue, that property is not being properly maintained. It is filled with litter, um, the woods are poorly maintained. Um, is there any plan to address that area?
Uh, we don't include any information on. There's no tree replacement proposed there, and I don't have any information on uh that, the maintenance of that area. We normally won't include maintenance of areas like that on our plans, but that is natural wooded area. Um, from my recollection of being on the site and walking that parking lot.
Are you extending the parking lot in any way in, I think it's area C, which I. Is the parking lot enlarged in any way?
Okay, so the, the employee parking lot, which is the parking lot to the south of the building. On that, on that little handle that goes down to Woodland Avenue, there is no plan to expand that parking lot at all. Now, I may need to reconfigure the striping a little bit along the Prospect Avenue corridor in order to get a sidewalk in there. But that would just be replacing pavement with curb and sidewalk. And, and pinching the uh, the drive aisle, which is extensive right now.
Are you familiar with the um planting that is required inside parking lots? For trees, there seem to be no islands in any of the parking lots that you've created, can you create them?
That's not true.
Can you show me where they are, where the parking islands are?
Certainly.
I mean, where the, where the tree islands are within the parking lot.
Alright, so here, here's, here's the parking lot that we're touching, and here are the islands within that parking.
I don't think you're sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Um. Okay, so we're reconstructing this parking lot, and we're creating planting islands within this parking lot. That's what we're doing.
Are you aware that the planting islands are supposed to um provide at least fifty percent shade? According to our tree ordinance?
Yes.
Would you say that that is providing fifty percent shade? It looks pretty small.
Well.
Uh, Mr. Petrie, was this approved by the town forester you're planting?
It's, it's still under consideration, right, Mr. Petrie, submitted?
Oh, I, I believe that the.
It's up to the forester.
It, is best addressed by the forester.
Correct.
Okay. Um, after the trees were illegally taken down um last year. The neighbors came out and they spoke out about flooding that is happening behind your property. Um, are you aware of that?
I, I, I saw the news article, yes.
Okay, on to the residential area.
Yeah, I, I saw the news article, yes.
And, and much of what they said is that they are now flooding so much because so many trees came down.
Um.
Is there anything that you will be doing to protect the, the residential neighborhood right behind your property?
Yes, as I indicated in my testimony, we're, we're eliminating five thousand square feet of impervious surface on the site. And replacing it with green area, so yes, we are doing, we are reducing overall runoff from this site.
Will the green area include trees?
Yes.
How many trees in the green area that you're replacing it? Will it be enough to, to stop the runoff that is happening to the neighborhood right behind your property?
Okay, so I, I understand what people say on television. And I also understand nature and gravity, and there is a. Berm be- behind the parking lot that has fifteen-foot-high, twenty-foot-high evergreens on top of that berm. And that berm was installed probably. Thirty years ago by the Knowles family so that water wouldn't run down the hill. From the parking lots, it can't, it can't get over the top of the berm, it would be six feet deep in the parking lot before it got over the top of the berm. So.
Um, may I ask if you would be willing to meet with the residents who spoke out um because of the flooding in the, in their area? Um, because of the flooding in the, in their area?
Councilperson Rudin, this is outside the scope of the planning board right now. So the expert said that there's no flooding. This is, anything could be done afterwards, contact their attorney. And I and I recommend that's going to be the best way to handle it.
Councilwoman, you're you're more than welcome to contact and I'll speak with, and Mike uh. And I will speak with a client and and obviously, our client wants to do whatever he can. Uh, to be the best neighbor possible. Uh, that's, that's a hundred percent his intent. Going forward.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. I'll have the neighbors contact you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Petrie? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Being none, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? For the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Being none, thank you. And close that portion of the meeting. Okay. Um, Ms. McGovern, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. A councilperson Scarp has a question.
Yeah, I just um, had a a question about the storm, uh. I want to make sure that we're adhering to the stormwater ordinance. We did pass it.
Councilperson Scarp, it came to the planning, but you passed it on the first reading. It came to the planning board. We just reviewed it this evening. The council has to get a letter from the planning board and they have to adopt it as a resolution. Till it's adopted. The, this application was in motion. Before the stormwater uh, ordinance was reviewed or passed. So this applicant is doing everything they can to a- a- apply to the stormwater management ordinance that was in place. At the time the application was first presented.
And which was recently updated.
Yeah.
To begin with.
Okay, yeah, it was recently updated.
Right. The state made the every town update it. Uh, councilwoman.
Yeah, but we we put, we put even more.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, thank you. Um, Ms. McGovern, well, uh.
Conditions?
Conditions, please.
Sure, it's just two. Uh, in addition to the normal, uh, we'll install a sidewalk from the hotel to West Orange Plaza Shopping. Uh, Plaza as per the recommendation of pedestrian safety committee report and will provide revised drawings. And will address uh, each of the points of the letter. Made by Mr. Scott and the Matrix Report dated March twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five.
And the. Just across their frontage, right? Just, just.
Sorry?
Just to cross their frontage.
Just to cross their frontage, which will connect with the West Orange Plaza sidewalk.
That the all plantings and tree replacement will be directed to the township forester for their approval. And there will be a clearly delineated. Uh, usage of that uh, portion of the property that's dedicated to uh, groups of the township. So the township administration will know who gets them, how, there's gotta be a a proper manual describing everything.
Okay, so what would that be? A manual must file a manual with who in the township, the clerk?
You can come up with a verbiage that we want to. So somebody has to contact somebody. At the manor. Who is that person or who's that group? How do they go about getting? To use that space? What groups should be clearly delineated?
Yep.
Okay? Uh, Mayor McCartney.
Thank you. Uh, should there be a co- a condition on maintaining the sanitary sewer also?
Yes, absolutely.
I I believe that was a comment, um.
Yes, it was a.
Matrix letter.
Which is part of the matrix comments. I don't usually, I don't usually separate them all out. I just usually, you know. The matrix report.
Mr. Petrie also asked for an increase in the number of people that are left in the building. Is that correct, Mr. Petrie?
That is correct from. Fourteen hundred and four to. Fifteen hundred and fifteen.
Right, and then there was, there was, and there was one C two variance that you provided testimony about.
Yes, and that is the impervious coverage. Which is a limitation of sixty in the existing condition. It's sixty-one point seventy-five. And we are proposing sixty point five three.
Okay. So I will say, I'll recommend that we consider that as the minimalist exception. And we will, we will, I would recommend. That we do provide a C two variance. Based on the decrease of five thousand square feet. Of of uh, impervious coverage. The applicant is willing to provide. So to that end. Does anybody else have any conditions or questions? Mr. Klein?
So go back again to the. The occupancy of fifteen fifteen is based on four hundred and seventy-one parking spaces. And that includes the entire site. Whether that carriage house becomes a bar, a restaurant. Whatever, right?
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Klein. That's how, that's how the condition has run historically.
Does any other member of the board have any questions? Or comments? Okay. Uh, a- a- and at this moment, I would like to thank all members of the board for uh, staying with us. And. Uh. I recommend P that we approve PB twenty-four days for, no, I don't, sorry. Like, I recommend we approve PB dash twenty-five dash O two, Orange Prop Prospect. LLC Block one fifty-one Lot one, that seventeen dot O one, Zone B two, one, one, one Prospect Avenue. Uh, fondly known as the manor. Uh, with a C two variance and the increase in the number of. Uh, people that could be on the site and the conditions here to aforementioned. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Vice Chairman Guerino seconds on the motion I am led.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarp?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes, and one question, is the new name going to be the estate? That's what I saw on the plan.
Yes, that's my understanding, Mayor. Um, I, but just to wrap it up, the manor, the historic manor will be incorporated inside the building. Uh, with, you know. Certain pictures and such, so they'll, and obviously, it's being retained, so there'll be an element. Of the historic manor.
I think we're precluded from using the name.
Unfortunately.
Thank you. Mr. Weyeno?
Yes.
Chairman Boggs?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Petrie, Mr. McPherson. Thank you all members of the planning board. Don't go away for a moment. The next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, June fourth. Uh, six thirty PM, in person in Town Hall. Zoom will be there only for viewing and our motion to adjourn. Motion. Mr. Klein, all in favor? You're above the nose. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night.